Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Otero County Regular Meeting Agenda. If we could get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Matherly.
Here.
Commissioner Griffin.
Here.
Commissioner Markward.
Here.
At this time, if you could all follow us in the invocation by Commissioner Markward.
Thank you, Father, for bringing us together today to work for our county and for the people who live here. We are facing troubling times as a state and as a county. I pray that you guide us with your wisdom to make us good, to have us make good and just decisions for the county, and the courage to fight for what we believe in. Watch over and protect all of those who fight to defend us here at home and in foreign lands. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. You'll follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Zia symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
All right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, at this time, we get a report from Sheriff Black.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
David Black, Otero County Sheriff. For February 2021, Otero County Sheriff's Office Patrol deputies responded to 2,158 calls for service. That was about 900 more than what we had in January. Generated 165 investigative reports, issued 137 traffic citations, conducted 47 traffic crash investigations, and all their work resulted in 137 arrests. Narcotics, we had five search warrants, six arrests, 14 case reports, seized about $900 in cash, 800 grams of meth seized, 16.6 grams of heroin seized, 10 pounds of marijuana, and 10 fentanyl pills were seized by our narcotics division. And just a little note on that, for next month's report, you'll probably see that increase quite a bit. We are starting to see an uptick of fentanyl pills coming into Otero County. And they did seize $81,000 worth of illegal narcotics. We are still responding to calls for service. Again, those, the calls that we can handle by telephone, we'll do it. But anything else we're responding to, face-to-face, am using necessary precautionary measures. Our special events, public relations, again, everything's been kind of put on hold for all that stuff. Again, training for February, it's kind of been still a little bit challenging with all the restrictions and stuff. So again, we're bringing in trainers from around the state and hosting the trainings within our facilities. And I am in the process of bringing in or getting an instructor certified within our agency. I think it's very important that we have continued training on de-escalation tactics and critical incident training. These trainings, again, they're not being done throughout the state, so we're going to bring somebody in so that we can get our guys trained up on that. Now, we do have two deputies currently at the Santa Fe Academy. Hopefully by the end of May, they'll be done and we can get them into the FTO program. We still have some openings we are trying to fill, conducting some interviews this morning for some transport and court security personnel. We also have advertised deputy positions, both certified and uncertified, and we have lateral positions and non-certified positions as well for full-time dispatch and a part-time dispatch position. We've also been busy communicating with Senators Burton and Griggs, as well as Representative Black, on all the bills, legislation that's going on right now. And I would personally like to thank each of them for their efforts and then providing some capital outlay money. We were able to purchase seven new vehicles for the sheriff's office with the capital outlay money. They're currently in the upfitting stages right now, getting all the emergency equipment and stuff installed in them. One bill that I wanted to kind of mention is Senate Bill 220A. It's a body cam bill. Last year, they mandated that we have body cams on every deputy or anybody that is in contact with the public. So even I wear one. So everybody has one, deputies, animal control, courthouse, they all have them. We spent about $160,000 on body cams, servers, NAS, storage, and everything to meet this mandate. If changes are made to Senate Bill 220A to include automatic activation of body cameras when a deputy is dispatched to a call for service, when a deputy pulls his or her handgun or taser from their holster, and when the emergency lights are activated on a patrol unit. Our current system, the only one of these that we would actually meet, would be the implement, the turning on of the body cam with the emergency lights. To be in compliance with the other mandates that they're trying to put in this bill, this is going to cost the taxpayers of Otero County about $500,000 for a five-year contract. There is currently no discussion that we've heard on watching the bills in committee about funding for, you know, to help. Basically, what it's going to cost, it's going to cost about $11,000 per law enforcement officer for a five-year period. Then you get to renew it, cost you another $11,000 for every. So this is going to be a lot of money that law enforcement's either going to have to come up with, or, you know, if the legislation can appropriate any kind of money or not. Again, this is, to me, it's another unfunded mandate that's going to hit the citizens of Otero County really, really hard. So that is all I have. Would stand for questions.
I have two questions, actually.
Is there?
One, are we, not we, are you still communicating good with the city police department and stuff like that? Are you on communications with them?
Myself and Chief Denton, we talk three, four times a week. We got a very good relationship going. We got a lot of projects going. For instance, our spillman, that's our new CAD system, they're on spillman with us. So the latest hiccup we kind of ran into with the spillman and the CAD system is some of our GIS, our mapping problems. We've actually worked out together where city's going to pay for two-thirds of it, we're going to pay for one-third of it, and we're going to get a company in here to help us fix the mapping problems. We're currently working together on the PSAT, the Dispatch Communications. So yeah, we've got a very good relationship, and we work together on a lot of projects.
Good. I just want to make sure we stay communication with them. The other is, you're talking about the big cost, the half a million dollar cost. Is there going to be grants available for that? Is that going to be a state-funded deal, or is that going to come strictly out of our budget here?
It's going to depend on, right now, there's nothing written in the bill as far as a deadline. You know, with the other one, they gave us 90 days to be compliant. I have not seen anything that gives us a deadline, whether they give us a year, two, or if they're going to do another short mandate as far as time. That we'll have to see. I know there's already talks that if this bill is passed and it's unfunded, that, you know, there's a lot of entities, whether it be the chiefs of police or the sheriffs association, you know, we're looking at possibly challenging this mandate.
Thank you, David.
I've got a couple of questions. Do you think the increase in fentanyl is due to the border being so wide open right now?
Right now, it's hard to say. See, we're seeing more of it, that they're getting some search warrants and stuff in the local area. We do have some partners involved with us, you know, DEA has been helping us on some of this stuff. And it's too early to tell exactly, we need a little more investigation as to trying to get to the origin of it.
And I just have a comment on the SB 220. In doing a little investigating in this, from what I understand, if this implements to where a deputy's dispatched and they get a call to Timberon, say, and you're running code, and it takes you 40 minutes to get up there, so that entire drive up there is going to be recorded. So then we're going to have to store that in our server for 120 days.
Yes, ma'am.
And then when we get IPRA, we request whoever's redacting those is going to have to look at all that footage. And from what I understand, it's like $50 an hour to use that software? I mean, this is just, to me, this bill is just, it's not doable financially for the counties. I don't know how we're going to do this. I mean, people need to get involved in these and start messaging your senators and your representatives, because this isn't the only one like this. I mean, we've spent hours reading these bills, and it's one after the other, and they all want the state to tell us how to run our county, but they don't want to pay for it. And Otero County doesn't have this kind of money. And I mean, this is just one bill. There's 624 of them up there right now.
Right.
So I encourage everybody to go to NMLEGIS.gov and check it out and see the absolute, it's like drinking from a fire hose, reading all these bills, and none of them are good. I mean, I could count on one hand the ones that are decent bills, and the rest are like this. It's just, it's not doable. So, thank you, Sheriff.
And I will tell you that I got home last night after qualifications, I got on the computer just to check on HB4, and passed committee last night.
I know. They're thinking they're going to vote on it this afternoon.
Yeah.
And that's another really, really bad one.
That's a disaster to government bodies.
Morning, David.
Morning, sir.
As you mentioned on the capital outlay that you were able to receive from the state on the vehicles, what's the hiccup, or the, what's the, why can't we get the same type of funding for the body cams and the infrastructure for that?
That was something that Senator Burton and I actually, we were texting back and forth the other night while he was on the floor. He's going to try to look into any kind of funding. Our only concern is, like, right now, we're kind of in, we're in the grant season. Grants are opening up right now. By April, they're going to be closed, and then they'll start making awards. It depends on when this goes into effect and how long we have to implement it. We may hit a grant season that we could try to get some money for it. We ask legislators for it. I mean, there's lots of options. It's all going to depend on how soon it has to be implemented.
Because in my opinion, the body cameras could possibly make more and more sense as we enter into a season where y'all are going to be faced with more liability, especially with the Civil Rights Bill and such that's on the floor right now. We know that that's going to, that's going to open huge doors. So, you know, the more transparency that we can provide, the more evidence that you guys can have to back up your position, and then it won't all be based just off of hearsay. So if we can get the funding for the body cams, I don't see why we wouldn't more than welcome that.
Yeah. And I love the body cams. We are working on, all of our new units, they have in-car video, which is synced with the body cam. So when you turn your lights on responding to a call, you've got three cameras within the vehicle, and you've got one on your body.
Sure.
Turns them all off.
Sure.
I got no problems with that.
Sure.
It, I love it.
Sure.
Because 90% of the time,
Just the call.
It tells me exactly what happened.
Sure.
We get a complaint. There's so many times people come in and file a complaint, pull the body cam, the unit, video, look at it. We'll even play it for them. And a lot of times, they stand up, they say, "Thank you for your time," and they walk off, because they realize that what they're reporting is a false report.
Sure.
So I'm all for body cams, it's just the funding.
Yeah.
I don't think that the state should be mandating all this financial burden on the law enforcement, counties, municipalities, and everything else. That's...
Yep.
Well, we just paid the $160,000 last year, and now this year, they're telling us $500,000. What's it going to be next time they're in session? You know, they're going to find something else they want us to use?
And kind of what's aggravating about the $160,000 system we have in place right now, that will go away. That will be scrapped, because it will not work with what they're wanting us to have to implement. So it's $160,000 down the drain.
Exactly.
So...
Okay.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Emergency Services, is Matt Clark?
Morning. Matt Clark, Emergency Services Director. For the last month, our code enforcement opened up 22 new cases. Nine of them were trash. We had one illegal burn, two junk vehicles, and 10 illegal dumpings. Nine of them have been closed, 13 still remain open. For fires, we respond, fire and EMS, we responded to 135 calls. We had four structure fires, a vehicle fire, and a wildland fire. 112 EMS calls, 11 good intent calls, which has been kind of busy throughout the county for that. We're seeing a lot more upticks in the EMS calls for assisting with AMR. They're transporting more and more patients out of Gerald Champion. Slash pit was burned last month, and once the snow finishes melting up there and the roads become better, we're going to go ahead and open up the slash pit again and hoping for another good season up there.
Is the snow, is it just walking the road coming in, or is it backed up into the pit where you can't dump anything?
It, there's just some residual snow up there, and it just makes it muddy. So having all the vehicles track in and out, develop the ruts, some of them could get stuck. So we're just waiting on that to dry out.
Is there any way that we could get the road department to try to bring a little material in or put something on that road? Because I do know a lot of people right now, with the warmer times, they're already starting to anticipate the season coming up and trying to get material cut and cleaned up. I don't know that we have any snow coming in for a while, but if we could open that up a little earlier, it'd be great.
Absolutely. I'll work with Tom on that and see if there's anything we can do. And we are going to try and get it open as early as we can, because we are expecting an early fire scene.
Yeah. So, and again, I've heard several compliments on having that up there, so that's a, thank you to your department on that. We appreciate it.
No problem.
Yeah. And I drove up and looked at that Zia Liquidagers, is that the name of it? Had all that junk up there. That's looking better.
It is.
So they're finally getting that cleaned up a little bit. That'd be nice.
Yeah, absolutely.
Morning, Beth.
Morning, sir.
What about with the urban interface efforts as far as fire prevention, removing fuels from around urban areas? What kind of projects do y'all have going right there, going there right now?
So with RC&amp;D, we have a project up in Timberon, and then later on in the agenda, we're going to be talking about public hearing to open up more funding to do some more projects up in the urban interface areas.
How are you, how do you judge which areas need more attention than others? Is that just, are you basing that on like a fuel loads and science, or is it just kind of putting an eyeball on things and seeing who might be more at risk?
It's in cooperation with our board that we have with RC&amp;D.
Okay, okay. Because with the direction that we're going right now, you know, I mean, it's everybody's greatest fear that, of catastrophic fire, and right now's the time when we can be doing something, instead of later, whenever we're all sitting around wishing we could have done something. So just encourage you in that. Keep focused, and if you need us to leverage maybe a letter or any other leverage that the commission board could possibly assist you with in order to get more funding and put more effort and emphasis, then let us know, because it's important. Better to avoid an emergency than have to deal with it afterwards, and that's what we're fixing to have to do if that forest catches on fire.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Road Department, Tom Porter?
Good morning, Commissioners, Tom Porter, Otero County Road Department.
Good morning.
It started off, just an update on Riada. Co-op came in, finished moving all their lines yesterday. TBTC is out of the way. Century Link Short Hall is the last one. Kelly Cable moved in there this morning. They should be done boring in the next two days. And they're trying to expedite the move and get it done in 10 days instead of 30. Kelly Cable, Hasi, the main contractor on the project, is actually out there doing excavation today so that they can start their bores, so they can get the pylons in.
And the one, Century Link was the one that was the major holdup?
The major holdup, the short haul. The long haul, the one we actually had to pay for, they came in and they moved that within two weeks of when we needed to get it moved. So...
And they anticipate being done on what day?
They're in there today. Kelly Cable moved in today to do the bore, to run the sleeve. They're going to try and expedite the cut and the splice. It usually takes 30 days because they have to notify everybody. They're going to try and expedite it and get it done in the next 10.
So within two weeks, we should be back on regular schedule?
Well, the contractor's in there as of this week, and they're starting to dig. So they're working around it right now. So we should be back, hopefully in two weeks, be 100% on the move on this project.
And our water problem, is it, we're still...
Right now, we're doing good with it. There's a little bit of runoff right now, but it's being absorbed before it gets down to the project. The road shop supplied, oh, I want to say 600 feet of culvert when we were having that one runoff problem, and Hasi installed it so we could actually divert the water down past the project, so it did not hurt anything that they'd already done.
I don't know if anybody has been out there to look at that project lately, but when I was out there the other day, that place looks totally different than when it started. The lands cleared, the property owner that owns the land to the west, that's all cleared and cleared off. The dike is clean, the banks are in great shape. It's going to be a good deal, so I'm hoping that Gwenna is happy with what's happening.
With all the delays on this, we're looking at a June timeline instead of April to be done with the project, but still should be rainy season.
Why is it always muddy?
Yeah. We ended up waiting a little bit longer than we wanted to for them to move stuff. Other than that, we've been cleaning culverts up at Penney Asco, Sack River Road, Riada Road. We hauled approximately 1,000 yards of rock-free material from the detention center over to rifle range, so Mark has got some good backing material, and he cleaned up some of the detention center overburden. Patching, we did some patching on Alamo Street, J.J. Henry, Laber City Canyon, and out through Tularosa area. Been doing mowing and brush cutting all over the area. Regular sign maintenance, we had two minor snow events that we had to do plowing and salting for, and one major Gabian project down on Taylor Ranch Road.
The, I did notice, and I was going to try to call you and speak to Jim, there was some signs down on, on Hamilton, right when you go into San Pedro subdivision on the loop from that big wind a week ago.
He's been running around all over the county trying to get them caught up. And then we had another one two nights ago, and we've got another one coming in tonight. So...
I got a nice message for you from Mark Douglas out at the shooting range, and he said to thank you very much for helping him with that dirt work on the lead abatement that they're working on. So, good job.
Thank you.
What about, more to tell, chip seal projects?
They're out there patching Riada. Should be done patching Tuesday next week. Then we're going to do a major move down to Chaparral. We've got a bunch of patching, because we haven't been able to get cold mix this time of year. We're going to do about a two-week stint down in Chaparral, doing a patch job down there throughout the entire area. And then as soon as we get back up to Tempe, and I don't like chip sealing below 70, as soon as we know we're going to have a bunch of good 70-degree mornings, chip sealing Riada is going to be the first one. So I'm figuring probably the second week of April, we'll be in there on Riada. And then we'll be moving to Donegan subdivision. We're actually doing a mill, a complete mill on all the east to west roads, overlay on the north to south, and then complete rebuild on the east to west. And then we'll be moving up to the mountains to do Hay Canyon Assembly, and then three little roads in Mayhill.
When are you going to be done with the Taylor Ranch? Because you're...
The Gabians?
Yeah.
They're done.
They're done?
They're done.
When I was out there the other day, they were still running, well, they were hauling equipment. I don't know if they were hauling out or...
They were moving Juno back in to do some blade work. I think that's probably what you saw.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Detention Center?
Morning, Carolyn.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you all?
Good.
Carolyn Barella, Correctional Services Director for the Detention Center. So this morning, our total population is 173 of a 208-bed facility. In facility, I have 141, 108 males and 33 females. I have three at the Department of Corrections, eight at Otero Prison, 21 at Hudson County. I do have one female juvenile, and she is in the Doniana County Detention Center. Yesterday, I met with Trent, our county project manager. We sat down, him, I, and my deputy director, so we could go over the scheduling on the construction to try to keep ahead of it, to kind of know what's coming up and what areas they're going to need to have access to. Hopefully with that, we'll be a little bit ahead on our side. It's hard to manage with construction, because we have to move and adjust, and sometimes it doesn't always work the way, you know, they like it. But we try to work with them as much as possible, and I think we're doing a really good job for, and I think it's going to, as it starts getting progressive into the facility, it's going to be a little harder for us to manage, but we're going to do our best. With him having these, us having these weekly meetings with them, I think it's going to help us to help them get along and get it done faster. So we do have some obstacles that we'll have to overcome, for like housing, but we're working on that. So the next thing I have is that we have testing next, testing and interviews next Wednesday. We have seven applications, so I'm hoping that we have seven that show up and that they pass, and we can move forward to hiring. Still have 15 vacancies, which we're hoping we can cut that in at least half. Wouldn't be nice. We finally got our two vehicles that were approved. We just got them beginning of this week, our passenger van, our 12-passenger van, and our interceptor that we ordered back in 2019, in the later part of 2019. But because COVID hit, we didn't get, we haven't gotten them. And we're hoping that our, the three interceptors that we are... And our, we're hoping that our, the three interceptors that we approved for our last budget, hopefully we get them sometime this year, if not maybe the beginning of next year. But with COVID, it's really stopped a lot of the, of being able to get equipment like that fairly quickly, so. Other than that.
I I've got a question. I had somebody contact me that has someone at the jail, and he's on work release, but he he can't do that now because of COVID, is that correct?
Yes, it's on lockdown. I have no movement unless it's absolutely necessary.
Do you know when that might loosen up a little bit, where they can go back to work, or?
At this point, I would say it might be a little bit longer. The only reason is because you take the chances every time somebody walks out and walks back in, that they don't bring it back in there with them.
Okay, so right now, you, it's just kind of on hold?
Yes, ma'am.
They won't be able to do that for a while?
Yes.
Okay.
Who who makes that decision, Carolyn, as far as the lockdown and the movement of the inmates? Is that a decision that's made by the the Detention Center, or are you mandated through that somehow?
No, it's made by the Detention Center. I made that decision.
So with that lockdown on that, Carolyn, when you have the construction workers working in and there, how is that? They're, I I realize they're not in population areas, but that's not gonna have a factor on it?
No, no. We move when we need to. They come out to see their attorney, of course, to go to court, because that's being done on a laptop. But other, any movement other than that, we we're not doing.
So what kind of lockdown, are they in 23-hour day lock, what what kind of?
No, they have their, in each of the pods.
They come into the community area?
Yeah, they, it's a, in, yes, they have a door, they have an open dorm where they can come out, and they can watch TV, they eat there. So it's not locked down like in their rooms. It's locked down in the pod that they're in. So if they have to come out for medical, they're escorted to medical. If they have to come out to go, the attorney comes in to visit with them through the visitation, which is through glass and over a phone, then they're escorted. And or if they have to go to telepsych or telemed or for courts, they're they're brought out, yes.
Hopefully that'll end soon, because I think if anybody's wanting to actually work, it's it's nice to let them go out and work and support their families. So hopefully that'll loosen up pretty soon.
Yes.
I'd like to see it loosen up as well.
Yes, I want it to be over as well.
Yes, I bet.
Maybe, you know, if you have somebody that can go on work release, then maybe they'd be agreeable to go to work and then come back and just stay in their cell and not be around the other inmates. If you're worried about, if you're worried about it spreading in your jail, then maybe you could, maybe, you know, with somebody, as Vicki mentioned, that's wanting to go out on a work release, maybe you could, maybe you could put a procedure in place to keep them out of the general population as well, where they go out during the day and they come directly back to confinement, I don't know. But I I I'm on the same lines as Vicki. If somebody's wanting, needing to go work and needing to provide for their family, you know, we need to try to do all we can to help those, help them, even though, you know, I mean, I know that they're there for a reason, but at the same time.
No, I mean.
It's as difficult enough as it is.
Yes, no, I agree. But right now, it's not possible, and they're very, the way that we are trying to organize it and to keep it, we have to, we have no room to do that. So at this point, it just really isn't. But we have, I have discussed it with my upper chain of command, and if we went to that, you know, if we're at that place where we could do it, where would we put them? How would we do it so that there would be no exposure to anyone else?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Project Manager Report. Good morning, Grant.
Good morning, Trent.
Good morning, Commissioners, Trent Parker, Project Manager.
Good morning.
We've got quite a few projects ongoing. The Detention Center, we're right in the middle of it. We have, with the COVID thing, reached some of our biggest obstacles, but we're we're working through them. And as Carolyn Barella said, we are currently gonna start meeting weekly because this is an ever-changing ordeal. So we may be able to get into some areas in another week that we couldn't get into this week. The additions are ongoing. They're working on keeping those going. We're still waiting on a revised schedule from the contractor to reflect some more accurate dates of completions and and to exactly where we stand on the project, so. We're, the architects are working to answer all RFIs that are sent in in a timely manner so that we don't have any holdups or delays. So a lot of attention to it. We have some consulting architects that are coming out on a biweekly basis to do progress reports and document all the progress on the projects, so that that's a big plus. There's the laundry room, they're, they've got it started. They're doing the first lift a block today on it. We're hoping to be setting the roof planks by the 17th, which is middle of next week. And so we're we're moving on along. Progress is is continuing, so we're, I'd like to see the progress a little, little faster with our timeline we have. And so we're we're working with the contractor on that real closely. Timberon, the fire station up there, we do have a pre-bid meeting today at 2 o'clock, and then the open bid is on the 25th at 2:00 P.M. And then we we plan on having it on the April commission agenda for approval for awardment. And then we are attentively planning on having the notice to proceed on April 26th. That's that's good news. We can get that built throughout the summer and and hopefully have their trucks inside by next winter. Chins, we are working on the budgets and design, finalizing the design, and working with DFA on, with the grant money from them to try to get this out. We'd like to try to get it out for bid by the end of April and have it awarded in in May, so. That'll be good to have a roof and kitchen in that facility, and this is the final phase of that, so it's good to see that that being completed. EOC, the contractor's been in there. They they're currently painting all the office walls that we change-ordered and and added in, and they'll be putting in the ceilings, and that'll be complete. We did execute another change order to to change out the front entry to a more secured entry point for the building. And and then Matt and I have been talking. He has some extra funding. We're trying to figure what's the best next step to take. So we're we're hoping even for some capital outlay money to to come in to be able to finish that project. The prison roof, the coating is now complete. We did an inspection last Friday of that. They're working on the closeout documentation. We received a letter from the manufacturer that they're accepting everything, so our warranty will be fully intact now. And so that's a, that's a good thing to finally have complete. Let's see. Tom pretty much brought you guys up to speed on the Riada Road. They are out also driving in the sheet piles today for the retaining walls, so we're back on pretty good progress there. I think that's about all I have.
Trent, I got on the warranty on the roof of the prison, how long is that warranty gonna be?
That's a 60-year warranty.
60?
60 years.
I'll put that on my house.
The Timberon job, now, I just want to make sure I understand, this is both phases of that job combined now that we'll be bidding out?
Yes, yes. We have received, finally received the capital money from the state. We had half the money, but when we bid it the first time, we didn't have enough to do the base project, so we had to to put it on hold until we received the remainder of the money. But we do have all the funds now, so we're pretty comfortable with that that's gonna be, gonna come in under budget.
And then at the, at the Detention Center here, the architect, on his inspections, they are gonna start? Because they were thought for a long time, so we need to make sure we get this going and stay on top of it for, given purpose-wise?
Yeah, they they did progress inspections all the way up till November, and the consulting architect that was doing the inspections had to have some eye surgeries done and was not able to drive and and make it to the project. And so in January, I contacted them and said, you know, as per your end of the contract, you guys are supposed to provide this service. And so they they hired another consulting firm to come over and do biweekly inspections.
Yeah, because that that project is, what, 230, 80 days out?
We are already approximately 320 days into a 500-day contract, so we're under 200 days to to completion.
Completing, and we're still a good chunk of that left.
Yes, sir.
That's all I got.
Appreciate you, Trent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trent.
Hey, at this time, it's gonna take us to, back to our agenda items. I would like to pull Agenda Item 18. Is there anyone else that likes to pull any of their agenda items?
I wanna pull number 15.
Can I get, can I ask you for a reason why you'd like to pull Agenda Item 18, Gerald?
My thoughts on that, this is in the court designation, there's, you also attach the travel voucher, which is a item that's in a court page right now, and I don't think that it needs to be talked about.
Well, I can pull, I'll pull that, I'll pull the travel voucher off of it. I'll pull the travel voucher off of the agenda item, and I won't speak on the travel voucher. But I'd like to at least have the grace to be able to respond to the, a public statement that you guys made and and give, give you the, give you an answer. You called for my resignation, so I'd like to be able to respond and and allow you to, you know, to know my position. So if you, if you would please leave that agenda item on there, and I won't reference the travel voucher.
I really think I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull the whole item, both of, both items off.
What, both items?
Both, the whole.
The statement that you guys, the pu, the press release that you, that you and Vicki released, or the county released? You wanna pull that?
I am not gonna make any comments on it for that.
Okay, well, if you don't wanna make any comments, that's fine, but I'm the one that put it on there. I would like, at least like the opportunity to to respond to it. You don't have to respond or comment on it, but I'd like to, I'd like for the agenda item to remain on the, on the agenda.
Okay, you are gonna pull?
Thank you.
Travel voucher.
Yeah, I'll pull the travel voucher off of it, absolutely.
Anything to mark what you got to comment?
Well, I don't mind responding to it, you know. I don't mind responding to it, but I don't wanna talk about it all day. I think we've got so much going on in the county right now that I don't wanna tilt it this very long.
So we will pull, no opposed to the agenda item 15?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna basically table that until we have a little bit more time to work on it. It's in conflict with another ordinance that we'd passed in 2019, and we need to do a little bit more work on it.
And then we'll pull the travel voucher discussion off of 18. All right. So that'll take us to the consent agenda items, and we're ready to consider the agenda items off, everybody's good with them?
So what did we pull off the 15, or 15 off of the new business?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the voucher off of.
Yeah.
All right. Back to consent agenda items, number one, request approval of February 11, 2021, regular meeting minutes. Item number two, request approval of accounts payable bills list, BL number 32, BL 33, BL 34, and BL 35. Consent agenda item number three, request approval of resolution number 03-11-21 backslash 109-43, annual certified county maintain miles report. Number four, request approval of resolution number 3-11-21 backslash, base 109-44, approving the lease agreement, the management agreement between Otero County and the Mayhill Community Center for the facility located at 15 Civic Center Drive, Mayhill, Otero County, New Mexico. Request approval of resolution number 03-11-21 backslash 109-45, budget adjustments, wildland personnel. Number six, request approval of resolution number 03-11-21 backslash 109-48, a correction resolution requested by the New Mexico Finance Authorities authorizing the sales of the former Laloos Fire Station. Number seven, request approval of award sealed bid 21-014, fire supplies to Laloos Fire, Volunteer Fire Department, to New Mexico Fire Almagorda. Request approval to reappoint Mr. David Dooling and Mrs. Cindy Strong to the Almagorda Public Library Board as the Otero County Representatives. If nobody has any questions on that, I'll make a motion for approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Now, take us to item number nine, which would be the scheduled citizen communication. Doc Sherwick and Don Pitts, Timberon Airport Co-op, would like to discuss the fencing of the Timberon, are they here?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Doc, I'm the manager and maintainer of your airport, Timberon, president of the Timberon Airport Cooperative. I have all good news today, well, mostly all good news. Any second to get this running. My last visit here was in November of last year, and I'd like to start with a review of where we've been since the last Commissioners' meeting, and then I'll break into some new, new information and discuss where we're going with the improvement. The big change since the last meeting is we've moved from a private airport to an open-to-the-public airport. This is a big deal. Prior to this, people who wanted to land at Timberon needed our permission to do so. Right now, we're open to the public. Anybody can come in anytime, land without permission. We've added the helipad to the master record, the FAA master record. We changed traffic pattern for one of the runways. We've changed our identifier from New Mexico 52 over to EO2, which is the International Civil Aviation Organization's nomenclature. So the entire world knows about the airport now. We have a common traffic advisory frequency for pilots to communicate within and amongst themselves to land and take off safely. And we've updated our TAC, new, our our new people that run TAC, we've updated that with the Secretary of State. We did have some trouble with the Secretary of State's office reaching out to them. The previous president resigned, and we needed a New Mexico state resident to be our, our contact with the Secretary of State's office, so we've got that resolved. Now I I have to bring up one small part of bad news. There has been some negative publicity on social media. The general aviation community is, I guess you would call it tight-knit or close-knit community. We have had some, I'm not a member of any of the social community organizations. I don't have Facebook or Twitter or Instagram or any of that. But I've been told that, the word is out there that the airport is not being run or been mismanaged recently, and also that the runway is causing damage to aircraft. Now, that's up to the Commission. If if TAC is mismanaging the airport, you know, you're free to make changes to that. As far as the uninformed opinion on damaging aircraft, I don't see any, there's been no reports of such. So I, you know, I can't really say that there is or has been any damage to aircraft, but the word is out there. So we are expecting with the. So we are expecting with the, uh, change to open to the public, we are expecting some modest and hopefully greater traffic in and out of Timburon Airport. Uh, so far, that hasn't happened, partly because of the COVID restrictions, which don't really affect general aviation too much because of the privileges and immunities clause of the Constitution. Everybody is able to fly everywhere and although some states have attempted to stop civil aviation traffic, it's been unsuccessful. Uh, but we were expecting an uptick in traffic, so far, it hasn't happened. Uh, so that's the small part of bad news that I have for you. That covers the review, since I've been here last. Now, the new business, if we could have the image put up of the, uh, Ideal Boundaries map, I'll have a picture of that and we can begin to discuss where we want to go and how we want to get there. Yes, that one. Thank you. This color-coded map is an image of the northwest end of our airport. You can see Bob White Street there on the far left Sacramento River Road and it curves around to Merlin Drive, uh, going down to the southeast. Um, we began this project as a simple fence boundary, uh, which would be the boundary in red. The boundary in red, uh, covers all of the Timburon Airport property over to the far southwest corner where the, below the helipad. Uh, we were going to make that into a very simple boundary. Uh, however, it's so close to the helipad that we can't put any fencing up there. Uh, the minimum restriction the FAA likes is two rotor discs. And a rotor disc is approximately 35 feet, so we need roughly 70 feet away from the center of that H to put up any kind of fencing. I started cogitating on this some more and I realized that the ideal boundary would be the red portion on the right, curving around to the yellow portion on the left, down the, uh, edge of Bob White and up to or crossing the Sacramento River culvert. Uh, the FAA and the state of New Mexico want a six-foot tall, what they call a, uh, a privacy fence that cannot be breached by people. I was originally going for a very small fence of two feet to keep ATV, car, truck, motorcycle traffic. Um, so ideally, we would like to do that. Unfortunately, the, uh, boundary in green is owned by a private individual and, um, we will likely run into trouble getting approval from that landowner to enclose a part or a significant section of his property. Uh, there are many solutions to this, so I don't present problems without presenting some solutions. The first is that small yellow gate. Uh, we can put in a gate up there in yellow. We can put in a 12-foot gate there and provide keys to the property owner and allow him to, uh, reach his private property from Bob White Street. Alternatively, um, we can seek remedy in asking him to, uh, allow us to encompass that section there and not provide a gate and he can reach his property from the gate on the far right, over to the far right in red. Uh, there are other alternatives. We can easement that property, that section of property. The county can declare an easement there and, uh, as part of the easement, require that we bound it by a fence. Um, the more forceful process would be a eminent domain taking. Now, while we're looking at this, the other part of the process here for safety is we want to improve the ability to reach the runway from the northwest. And in brown, you can see the harvest pines here, improved glide angle for runway 13. There are about 18 to 20 pines and spruce on that property. And our approach angle comes right over Sacramento River Road, crosses Bob White, and then our touchdown point is down at the, the black section where it says 2 here. With those pines there on a 25 to 1, uh, ratio glide slope, that puts our touchdown point very far down the runway. And in aviation, we have a cliche that says, "The least useful thing is the runway behind you." So if you can't touch down on the beginning of the runway, uh, the probability of you running off the other end of the runway just gets higher and higher. And so we'd like to also see about harvesting those pines. Unfortunately, again, they're on private property. So this is all a safety improvement to allow us to better access the runway. Uh, this is where I'm going to need guidance from the county on how we want to proceed, uh, with this. Um, I've developed some state funding and we'll talk about that, uh, in a few minutes. But in order to make the runway 13, which is the, uh, northwest end of the runway more useful, cutting those pines down and fencing with the yellow and red, uh, that would be very, very useful for planes landing and taking off at Timburon. So do you have any questions on that part of it?
Have you, Mr. May, have you spoke with Mr. Massey on that, on any of this proposal at all?
No.
You have not? With the trees, is that going to be the big issue?
Uh, it's not just the trees, it's the whole thing. We can't put the fence next to the helipad, we just can't do it for safety. So you see, I was going to bound it with rocks there, uh, some boulders. Even that is not really approved. The helicopters want, like I said, two rotor discs diameter for safety. So it's, it's the pines, it's the access to the land, uh, by aircraft, it's the cutting down the pines to make the glide angle better, you know, it's, it's a whole package kind of thing.
Really, we can talk about a lot of things that we can do, but if you don't have Mr. Massey's approval on doing it, then why even waste our time talking about it?
I'm okay with that.
Really, I mean, we really need to talk to him first as to see, I mean, because, yeah, we're already kind of, we already kind of know the differences that y'all have, unfortunately. Uh, and, yeah, he's not going to...
Well, I have no, I have no differences with Mr. Massey.
Sure.
He, he has a lot of differences with me, but I have no differences with Mr. Massey. Uh, however, this, this focus here is entirely for safety and security. So my three jobs are safe operations, secure operations, and uptime. Aviation, uh, aircraft uptime. And, and that's where this is going. So however you want to do it, I'm open. Like I said, I have multiple solutions. However the Commission wants to approach this, you know, I'm your representative for the airport. I'll work with you however you want it.
If, if we took you on your red line and, and came back 70 feet from the helipad from where the arrow is going back up to where your black arrow hit the...
Mm-hmm.
And just brought the fence to there, would that, would that slow people down? Do you think they'd just drive around it and...
Yeah. In fact, that's actually going to be, uh, worse condition because what we have now is we have road and ATV traffic where you can see those two tracks. What this is going to do is if we put a barrier up there, that's going to force vehicle traffic towards the heliport and the runway. So that's actually is going to make it worse if we terminate the fence up at that, uh, large rocks area there. Because they're just going to divert around and then be a, a greater hindrance or interference with the helipad and the end of the runway.
So what would be the option of moving the helipad?
Uh, we can move the helipad and I'm going to discuss that in a few minutes. Um, there are other reasons to move the helipad, uh, so we can move that. But even if we go to the bottom, lower red line where the black 2 here is on the left side of the runway, even if we take the fence to that, that's still going to allow automobile or ATV motorcycle traffic to drive around it and then they'll actually be driving on the runway. So anything, and I, you can see with the red lines, I started where you are now. That's where I started. And I said, "No, that's going to make things worse. That's just going to cause more trouble with pedestrians and vehicle traffic interfering with the runway and helipad." So the, the best solution is to encompass it with a yellow line and provide either a gate, you know, or some other method to access the private property. Or my other options, like I said, are to condemn it in an eminent domain. Or declare it an easement. Nothing can be built there anyway. You can't build on the end of a runway anywhere. You can't put any, raise any structures there, so... Anyway, something to cogitate about, you'll have access to this. Now you, you have an understanding of the ideas that I'm working with here and, and how best to use this, uh, this land for safe operations of aircraft.
When I was up there and did it, that access, yes, I see that as a very troublesome deal, but when Tom Porter and I were up there, there's another road that comes in off of Merlin down, comes right by a house that you can access on that he's using.
Right. Between, between lots 18 and 19, there's, it's not really a public access, but there is a, a roadway that'll go down there in between lots. And in fact, uh, those are trespassing on both lots 18 and 19. There is no public easement access there. So that track that you see, that's, that is on either lot 18 or 19 or both. And I can gate that, I can fence and gate that, no problem. Okay, uh, this, I'll just allow you to cogitate on this and see what you want to do. Now, let's move on to some other airport improvements. Um, I've developed some funding through the state. We have not been able to develop funding through the federal government yet because we're not on the national plan of airport improvements. We're a brand-new, fresh, open-to-the-public airport. That's going to be 24 to 36 months down the road. But the state aviation department has, uh, agreed to extend some budget to us for runway improvement and for the fencing, the border fencing. Um, if we could have the image up of the entire airport? Uh, let's see. How about perimeter, the one above that? There you have an idea of the, the basic perimeter of our airport, except for the bottom boundary. It's not exact, it should be closer to the runway. Uh, we have 4,980 feet of runway, 50 feet wide. Uh, the state has asked us to bid on a, uh, proposal to pave it. Uh, we're looking at paving it with hot mix asphalt. I've got two contractors, uh, prepped to bid on that Friday and Saturday. I'm thinking that with the budget the state has given us, we probably will not be able to pave the entire 50-foot width. Uh, so the good news on this, I mean, there's many pieces of good news here. The, the most good news on this is we're on a very, very stable base. The modulus of our soil up there is probably 25 to 30,000 PSI of, uh, hard, hard clay. And the original developer of Timburon was very smart and he, he ground that and graded that in a 2.5 to 3% crown, which is ideal. The county was generous enough to, uh, put a substrate down for us of emulsion and, uh, uh, compressed aggregate and for the soil surface and the substrate, the substrate we have down, this is a, a perfect environment, environment for us to right now lay down hot mix asphalt. A lot of, Mr. Porter knows far more than I do about this, but the preparation for asphalt can be as deep as 18 inches in some cases. Our frost layer here at 7,000 feet is roughly 4 to 6 inches. It won't affect the clay, it won't affect the substrate. Uh, we have no permafrost, we just have a frost layer. And, um, uh, it's, it's really ideal for us to lay down hot mix asphalt. So we're going to have those bids, uh, probably by next week and I'll communicate them to the county, uh, officer and they can decide on, you know, how much we want to do. I'm thinking, I'm hoping, thinking that we can do probably 30 to 35 feet, um, to get under the budget that the state will require. Now, the funding from the state is 100% funding if we get this all in, on or before May 31st. The funds for 2021 have to be allocated by June 1st. Uh, anything that comes in after that, I'd be coming back to you because it would be a 90-10 split, 90 state, 10 county. I'm not sure how you want to do that, you know, how you want to work on that, but that's kind of where I'm at. Uh, some other good news is, you can't see it from here, but off the far right end, the landowner on the, on the southeast side harvested all of the pines off of their, uh, land there. It's, it's along a street called Electrum. And that has increased our runway effectiveness on the southeast side by approximately 700 feet. Um, this is very meaningful, as I mentioned before, because the runway behind you does no good. And right now, it's a mountain airstrip. We have to do kind of a carrier landing approach or chop, drop, and stop. And we want to avoid that. We want to, we want to have a stabilized 25 to 1 glide ratio that allows us a touchdown zone, um, nearest the end of the runway that, that gives you a lot of runway ahead of you. Uh, that's the same thing we're asking from the landowner on the far left up there. It's near the apron, is to clear those pines to make a better glide path for our runway access. Okay, that's all I have for prepared. I'm ready to answer any questions you have. Uh, there's another image we can bring up, I believe. Let's took a, the, look at the lots plat, the bottom one, just briefly. Now, I want to point out here, this, this is a plat from the Timburon development. I want to point out that on the upper right, lots 1 through 36, those are part of Timburon development. As opposed to the land that's, shows as just open space along the Sacramento River to the southwest, that's part of Sacramento River Estates. It's not part of Timburon development. So that land that's privately owned down there, for whatever reason, when Timburon was developed, they chose to leave that river-bottom area, uh, out of their, out of their developed, uh, area. So we have, Timburon Airport Co-op, we have no control, we have no access, we have no responsibility, we have nothing to do with that land at Sacramento River Estates. But we do work with the landowners on lots 1 through 36 and we continue to work with the landowners up there for the betterment of the development of the Timburon Airport and the use of all of the runway by those lot owners. So that's, that's my charter, is to make the airport, the runway, as safe as I can and as secure as I can and operational-ready for all of those landowners and now for the general public, because we're open to the public.
Well, if I may...
Yes.
You probably really need to get in contact with Mr. Massey and see his feelings on the trees. Uh, because it sounds like this needs to, to come back in front of the board for approval for the financing to try to get you in by...
June 1st, May 31st.
Right. So that gives you two Commission meetings to have this put together.
Yeah. Like I said, I've got two bids coming in already. Uh, what we need from the county right now and specifically from the county attorney, the state is requiring that we provide a statement on county letterhead that, uh, the county owns it and will maintain it in perpetuity as an airport. They don't want to have that money spent and then turn around and build condos on it or something, right? So, so they need that letter before they'll take any kind of action to put together a grant proposal. That letter is critical.
Shouldn't be a problem on that, Michael Loether.
Uh, no, but that itself wouldn't be a problem, but, um, I had a conversation with Ms. Aldner that, about getting the board's approval for grant applications. But if you would like me to write a letter and say we own it, then, uh, I can do that.
The board does have a resolution that grants cannot be applied for by other entities unless they get prior approval from you. And they have to submit the application to you so you know what they're applying for and if there's any match by us and where we would take it from.
This, this is basically just a format of a regulation to apply to what he's doing, right?
Right, it'd be a letter that, that we're going to own it, we're going to maintain it, we're going to keep it up to spec. So we're going to need to, the Commission will need to count the cost first to see, because, you know, I mean, we commit to this, then we're going to be bound to, again, to, to make it probably a pretty good investment, uh, an ongoing, future investment. So, I mean, I'm, I, I love airports and I see the great need for them, uh, but at the same time, we have to take everything into consideration and...
On that point, up through May 31st, if we get to, we need to fill out something from the county to, to apply to the state for the grant. Up to May 31st, if we get that in, it's a... Up to May thirty-first, if we get that in, it's a hundred percent state, one hundred percent state. Anything after that would be ninety-ten split. Now, as far as ongoing, the state does have a non-capital expense improvement grant process for annual reimbursements. Annual reimbursements, you know, they're ongoing expenses, they're not like capital improvement, they're ongoing expenses. If I come back to you at the end of the year in October or November and also go through the same process of getting your permission to draw a grant from the state, we get a certain allotment each year to pay for ongoing maintenance, upkeep, repairs, things like that. And that would be one hundred percent state as well. So that money is coming into Otero County.
All right.
Other questions? Okay, I would ask the commission to think about this, talk about it, discuss it amongst yourselves, get with the county attorney. We would like that, that statement out of Otero County as soon as we can possibly get it, because like I said, May thirty-first is our cutoff and then I've got to get the bids working on the paving and probably do some soils testing with Mr. Porter. I'll have to get with him later. We need to do some compressive loads testing to make sure I'm right that we can just put hot mix asphalt down there. As far as contacting Mr. Massey, I've appointed my vice president as the point of communication for Mr. Massey and upon your recommendation, I'll contact him and have him reach out and they can coordinate how they want to do that.
Well, for us to discuss it, it's going to have to get on a regular agenda item, so we're not going to be able to discuss it amongst us. So if you can get with Mr. Massey, get his comments on what he's going, excuse me, what he's going to do the next month, we need to get that put onto the agenda.
Okay.
Where we can discuss it.
Okay. Okay. And next agenda, I will be able to be here with all the appointed representatives from the TAC to be here and he'll speak on my end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, good to see you again.
Appreciate it, Bob.
Item number ten, Lori Anderson, Otero County Economic Development.
Good morning, commissioners.
How are you, Lori?
Good, thank you.
Good.
My name is Lori Anderson, I'm the interim executive director for Otero County Economic Development Council. We'll see if we can get my presentation up. I'm probably going to be speaking fast to be respectful of your time, but at any point in time, please don't hesitate to stop me and ask your question. We are a board of fifteen members and an office of two. Monica Stevie is my marketing coordinator and she's out in the office, but I'm sure that you probably have seen several emails that come from her. And we are, our board is comprised of fifteen members, leaders in our community. What we're tasked to do is bring in economic-based jobs, economic-based businesses to our community which will allow more job wealth in the wealth for the community of the people who are getting these jobs. We do not seek retail, that's out of our scope, however, when retail reaches us, we do assist them however we need to. Next slide, please. Again, one more. So first, before, for anybody in the audience or watching, Commissioner Mark Port, I'm just, I've said it before in other meetings, but first and foremost, we want to let you know that when we receive a project into our, into our hands, whether it's a lead or an actual project, we name them. We codename them for the protection of our clients because of several reasons, whether it's acquiring, trying to acquire the property, whether it's negotiations, or whether they may be shutting down a business where they're currently located and we don't want to put them in harm's way of everybody just up and leaving wherever their businesses are at. So with that being said, and understand that this, the update that I'm providing you today is for the last two quarters, but we since have had a lot of things happen within the last two months. With Project Oasis, this particular project is a jewelry cleaning production company. Right now, we are working through the logistics with the state of New Mexico. There, there's some technical difficulties with this. This is a project that we've had going on since October, my apologies, September, and it looks like it's probably going to be a little bit longer until we can work through some of the logistics. Project Fresh specifically told us that they were going to put us on hold until after the elections. Unfortunately, since the elections and the way that it turned out, they decided not to pursue expanding their business into New Mexico. And Project Feed, at this point in time during COVID, because of the issues of the different challenges that we had, they decided to go ahead and cash their operation and fund it themselves. And so I do believe that at some point, they will be coming back to us to provide some expansion to their property. With that being said, we do receive project leads all throughout the community, my apologies, through the state of New Mexico, the New Mexico Partnership. They're the ones who are primarily provide us with leads. In the past, I'll be honest with you, we have certain months that they would provide us a little bit more, so I could probably tell you what those months are. But I will tell you since, nobody taught us how to do economic development in a pandemic world, so we've really had to change new ways of how we sold our community. And what we've come up with overall, economic, economic development directors with the state of New Mexico, we have come up with visual tours of our communities, how we're going to get there, how do we get in front of them, along with our New Mexico Partnership. What they've done is, because we're used to going to trade show sales missions and actually face-to-face meetings with these people, so we've been doing them through Zoom. It's kind of been challenging, but it definitely is getting, we're getting a lot more response to it. And with that being said, you'll see, this is not a normal, when I bring leads to you, this is not normal. This many leads that we have is not something that has happened in the past. With that, this is accumulation of, we, OTC has signed up with a site location consultant, which means these site location consultants are actually speaking to the representatives of the businesses. They are project managers, they are brokers, they are the ones who are going to make the decisions. And so we teamed up with them and what they're tasked to do is put us in front of those people. And that, we, we signed on with them, the very end of September, we were hoping to launch our marketing campaign effective October first. Well, little did I know how much time it was going to get to teach them what Alamagordo was all about and make sure that they're going to address the industries that we're currently working towards bringing into Alamagordo in New Mexico. With that being said, our campaign was ready to roll out the end of November, but that's because that, but then at that time is when we had the second shutdown. And we realized that it probably was not advantageous to put that information out because people wouldn't be in the office, people just might oversee it. So we decided to put that campaign in full gear the first week in January. With that, we've seen an overwhelming response to the fact that they just want to inquire about our community or they want to keep it in their library for future projects. But with that, so that, some of this is what you're seeing is the result of our signing on with this other consultant as well. And it gives you detailed information. So again, when I bring you the information, I can only give you stuff that whether the requirements are a certain square footage of a property. Right now, I have a shortage of twenty thousand square foot facilities, forty thousand square foot facilities. I know that our organization is trying to work on maybe figuring out how we can get a shell building and market that shell building and with the hopes of you build it and they will come. This is something that Farmington has done and they've been overwhelmingly successful at this. So it's something that we're looking at and seeing if we can try and figure out how we can get that put together, because we do have, we do own some property that we would be able to do that with. And most of the time, they're able to tell me that these particular projects are going to be however many employees that they're bringing and they'll tell us, is it going to be an expansion? It can tell us, for instance, we need to be next to like a rail service or transferred by the airport. And so the rail is a big issue, but probably the one thing that we keep getting overlooked at as a community is that we do not have certified sites. We don't have a piece of property that is certified, that is not going to create any delays for these companies if they're going to have to build to suit. So that is something else that we are working on towards trying to see how we can get our properties certified. I know that there's a bill going into the state to see how we can set up a certified site program, which would be absolutely great because we are getting overlooked because we don't have that property. Again, since these were two, two quarters, the past two quarters, I do want to bring up two projects that we just recently received and I think because you'll probably hear about it. Again, I can express the importance of confidentiality. A lot of people love to spread things on social media and it's, I always tell people, if somebody's coming into town, let that company display it, put it out there because it's their investment into our community. So we shouldn't be spreading that because it could very well jeopardize the project. I will tell you that our project Gold, which is not listed up there, is probably the highest confidentiality agreement that I had to sign for our client. And it's primarily because of the acquisition of the property. But what I can tell you is it would create a hundred and twenty-five jobs. They are going to be good jobs and it's going to be an industry that would stay for quite some time. I can tell you that there has been an agreement of the purchase price of the property, but I know that currently the property owners are having their counsel look at that agreement to make sure that the terms are correct and all the logistics behind it. But it's something that, it's going to be good for Alamagordo in just providing those jobs to our community. We also have one, Project Sweep. It happens to be a company that's looking at relocating into El Paso, but we got word of it and we were able to capture their attention and we do believe that we have the workforce to be able to sustain their business. And so that's something that we're looking at, hopefully being able to seal the deal. And we actually have the prime property as well, the location, and it's already a building that's already in place. And then, just to mention, something like, we do have those companies who do reach out to us and it was DH Lescom, that one we have been working on for four years. It has just been taxing for our company, but we're very excited to have them in our community. And so in this, I'll tell you, so when we have the good news, we want you to spread that on social media and we want you to share that because these site selectors and consultants are looking at social media to see, are we a business-friendly community? Are we open for business and how are we going to get them to the finish line? So it's something I definitely want to encourage you. Next slide, please. Part of what we do is the business retention and expansion and recruiting. So when we have a company who signs up for business license in our community, we get them mail out, so we provide them the mail list, so we provide them welcome cards and welcoming them into the community, seeing what we can do to help them and providing them information in regards to the resources that the community can provide to them. And we do do follow-up calls in regards to that. We have not been working in the office, we're by appointment only, but we are working remotely. So during the COVID, when the first two shutdowns, we had such an influx of calls and it just happened to be the time that I hired my marketing coordinator, so no better time to get her feet wet in situations like this. But it's been a hard time. It's been a hard time with these businesses that are in place, just trying to get them to survive what we're going through. I will tell you that it's, you know, it doesn't matter what side of the seat you sit on, it's just a hard time to attract businesses into our community, especially being the state that is closed, but the fact, just how, just trying to navigate through everything. But I will tell you this, and it's not, it's, I have a hard time kind of saying it in regards to, it's sad because of the current businesses that are in the community, but in regards to economic development and those businesses, there are so many businesses that are looking to leave urban areas. They're looking to find a new location. They're finding that the fact that they're able to work at home, their employees are really able to work at home, but they're stuck in a seven square foot, seven hundred square foot apartment or condo to the point where what they're paying for that price, they can easily come to New Mexico, to Alamagordo and have a wonderful quality of life, have a nice home. So we're finding more and more, we're just having to be a little bit more creative. One thing that I'll tell you is that we have an industry that, I'll be honest with you, I never even thought about until I spoke to a company owner and that is the gaming industry. The gaming, the people who write the software for the gaming industry are looking for, they're not looking to go and find a Red Lobster or shop at a Macy's. What they're looking for is a quality of life. One that, when they get, when they get away from their computer system for twelve hours a day, they want to go and free their mind, whether it's riding trails, hiking, golfing, or skiing. That's what they want to do. And so this is an industry that has located in Las Cruces and we're just trying to team up with Las Cruces to bring them to Alamagordo, to bring those particular industries and making it more aware. But that's again, trying to think creatively, like what can we provide these companies? Next slide, please. So with COVID nineteen, we have not been attending trade shows, familiarization tours, and we've had very limited professional development. Again, we have a heavy marketing task to get it, to get information primarily to our local community. We have visited Cloudcroft, Tulareosa, Chaffrelle. We've met with those leaders and just to make sure, to let people know that we are there. And I'll tell you, in the beginning, we received more calls probably from the Cloudcroft location than, than before even Alamagordo considered making those phone calls. And so we were able to assist them, at least direct them in to programs that were going to be able to suit them. And the next thing is, is the virtual tours of Alamagordo. So it was very important that we showcased Alamagordo. Instead of looking at alamagordo.com or just looking Alamagordo, we want to show them really good information. So unfortunately, again, COVID did hold us up for some, a bit of time. And so we started filming at the end of January, the beginning of February, to do a visual tour of Alamagordo. We got with local leaders, we got with the city of Alamagordo, we got with Mr. Oliver at the Chamber of Commerce and we, and the schools, education systems, we got with them and we were able to put together some really great content. And I was hoping, I was hoping to have it today to be able to show you, but there's just a couple more tweaks that needed to be made. But I will be, we will be sending that out to you, so you have the opportunity to see that. But I think that that, it's turning out to be a really great, informative video about Alamagordo and that we are open for business and we are business-friendly. Next slide, please. The marketing campaign obviously is probably the most important part. I can talk to site consultants all day and project managers, but really what, what the information that Monica provides and puts together is truly probably far exceeds what I do, because that's what's going to capture their attention, especially if we're not making that first phone call. And so we are constantly updating our information. Those are just a little, a few examples of what she's put together. But it, we have a lot of informative information that we want to get to the community of Alamagordo. So we definitely, when we, when we're able to go back into businesses and hand them our business card and tell them and educate them on what we do and how we're there for, we plan on providing them the resource guide and hopefully it'll be that one-stop place that you can look at to be able to find whatever the solution is to your issue that you might be having. And again, we had the partnership with the global sites location industry. We had a discovery day, that's when they, our consultants actually met with different leaders in the community, providing what they're sell, our community leaders, how they're selling Alamagordo. And then they just wanted to get to know, they wanted to be a member for a day. Our lighthouse campaign, that's the, the marketing campaign that I mentioned to you that we started in, in February, I'm sorry, January. And then Prospect Live events, those are events that are conducted by Zoom and these are actual projects that are live, that are ready to move forward. And so they're just looking for a location, so we are actually speaking to that decision-maker. And some of the things, I think you have to be creative and you have to know your community, because I can tell you, there was a particular project that was, it was a cardboard manufacturer who built boxes and they were looking at locating in El Paso. Well, with the fact that, with the fact that they Well, with the fact that, with the fact that they were in El Paso and some of the requirements that they were looking for, I, I couldn't understand why not Alamogordo. And so at that point, I definitely jumped in and I'm like, hey, let me tell you about Alamogordo. And at that point, they were considering us because I was able to show them that the different agriculture that we have here, the wineries, the pistachio farms, the, you know, in Hatch, we have green chili, the uses of who needs cardboard boxes. And so we were actually a contender for just a short time, but El Paso, Texas has an unlimited fund to be able to provide our, these companies. So sometimes it's a hard sell. But it's just the fact that, you know, if we know that we can supply that and we can be that resource, or maybe they're not even thinking about something that we have available here, we definitely try to do our best to open that thought process, especially if we feel like it's going to be a good fit for Alamogordo. Moving back to, real quick, before I forget, moving back to Project Gold, the project that they're already almost to the deal, they, we are, we're competing right now with Las Cruces. In the event that we cannot get that property sold in agreement, they will move their operations to Alamogordo. So that's another reason why the confidentiality is so important, because a lot of times we're competing with our neighbors. And so we definitely don't want to see them go because it makes sense for them to be here. So I just wanted to give you that little snippet. Next slide, please. And this is just a listing of all the different posts that we post. How many are we doing? The Facebook, LinkedIn, email, and website, the different updates that we have. We definitely try to keep you on top of what's going on in economic development. Next slide, please. And I stand for questions.
What about Madeline Ramps? What's going on with Madeline Ramps?
Well, as a matter of fact, I just checked in with Mark a couple weeks ago and he is on task. He has his employees, he's, honestly, I'll be very honest with you, I anticipated that he am not having enough employees, but he is on task with his LITA agreement and he had 17 employees and he's still rocking.
He's got 17 full-time employees out there?
Yes, yes, he does. And he's still producing, he's still shipping out.
Yeah, yeah, because there was sure a lot of hype. I mean, I didn't hear you mention Madeline Ramps one time during your presentation, but there was a ton of hype on Madeline Ramps. That's all we heard for a long time.
Right. Well, I mean, once we get the, once we get the project to a close, then we, we pretty much, I mean, we still are there for them as partners as they need us. But we, we're not hounding them as we were before. But they're still in production.
I, I just, you know, and this is my own, I guess maybe it goes back to being a Republican or should, but I've just, I'm a firm believer in private business and private money and private investments. You know, I, I feel like our tax dollars should be used for infrastructure and to support our children and to support our elderly. And I just see us getting, I see the LITA funds as being a bleed on the taxpayer, you know, all the, it's tax money that's being funneled out of where it should go and now it's, now it's going off into the private sector to buy and invest and allow those in private businesses access to tax dollars on the promise that they're going to create all these jobs and all this big hoopla. And then we have other cookie factories and other flops around here that don't ever, don't ever do it. You know, I think that if we were smart, we would take our tax dollars and we would invest it in infrastructure, our roads, our schools, our, you know, what, what businesses need in order to, to have a good business. I mean, what, what good is a business in a town where the roads are so bad, you can't even navigate through them, you know? So that's just, and it's not, it's, please don't take it personally or a shot directly at OTC or any of the, these kind of organizations. But, you know, I, I'm on the old school. I think if you want to start a business, then dig in your pocket and if you don't have anything in your pocket, then save until you do and then begin to make personal investments and then you have strong businesses. If, if we just create all this tax money to go in to the private sector, then we just have people that just take advantage of that money and then never produce or never, you know, if, if you're not making that investment out of your own pocket and out of your own efforts, then you're not going to take care of that investment as much. If I'm just taking money from the tax base that should be going to help our elderly and fund our senior centers and our schools and our children's programs and our 4H and other programs that are starving to death right now, and I'm constantly taking that money, giving it to all the, the big business people so they can build hotels and everything else around here, then it's just a bleed and it's just, it's, it's not something that I support. I, I support making the effort to provide the infrastructure and be a liaison and if you have businesses that are inquiring about what resources or what infrastructure is around to sustain their business, then I believe the government's job is to have great communication and, and show them what, what they can, they can do. But whenever it boils down to the investment, the dollars, those need to come out of their pocket, not out of our children's or our elderly, and that just should be a conservative position.
And if I, if I may respond to that, I do want to remind you, pre-check is probably the poster child of New Mexico for receiving LITA dollars as well as J-Tip dollars. And here we are, over 20 years later, and they're still producing, they're still having plenty of job, good paying jobs with good excellent benefits behind it, even during the COVID times. Their job has not stopped and if anything, it's probably increased even more, especially trying to do background investigations for the medical personnel, putting people to staff. So I would like to remind you of that. I'll tell you, I, it was definitely pre-me in regards to the cookie factory. I, I've heard the stories on where we're at with that. But with that being said, you know, we have a company owner who owns that particular property, who lives in Mexico, and we do not have, we, when, when we use LITA dollars, whether it's at the state level, but preferably at the local level, in the event that they are not able to fulfill that, even through different extensions to their contract, because nobody wants to take away their property or their business. You know, the, we, the city and the state try to work with them as long as that they can until they, we can no longer do that. And so what we do is they clawback. Back when, in the very beginning, I know that the pellet, pellet project, and then, and somewhere in the cookie company, the clawback was not there at that point in time. But I can assure you that Madeline Ramps is, the city of Alamogordo will own that in the event that Madeline Ramps goes belly up and they do not fulfill their contract, the city of Alamogordo will own that. And so I can tell you, the city of Alamogordo is going to be invested in trying to move that property. So it is the same thing, the owner who owned that had held on to it for over 20 years, wasn't interested in selling that business, when that was probably the most prime property I had for companies, warehouses that were doing it. But I couldn't make, I could not get a deal done because the owner of that property was not willing to sell. So then we have to sit and look at it for 20 years and not, so the clawback is there. I understand what you're saying, but it definitely, we have to think about it. We're not the only, we are lucky as a community of Otero County in Alamogordo that we have our own LITA because we're competing with 33 other community counties.
But if it's ours or somebody else's, it's still tax dollars and it's still like the government is going into business. I mean, I'll give you a great example, where I grew up in the sawmill and business. My dad put everything together himself and built a little sawmill that provided for our family and then the guy down the road goes and gets all the grant money from the government and puts in a sawmill that goes in direct business with us. But yet, it's just like you get all, it's like the government goes into the sawmill business and the people just get to hang their name on the front of the business. But it's, but it's, it's, it's not a place where, at the end of the day, it's not a place where our tax dollars should go. Not whenever our children are suffering, not whenever our elderly are suffering, not whenever we have infrastructure problems that are, that are horrible. We shouldn't be allowing business owners to take those tax dollars that should be used to support our senior citizens and our children. It's just, it's like whoever's strongest pushes off the weak from the trough. And unfortunately, a lot of the business, the big business owners are some of the most powerful and they push all the weak away from the trough where the weak should be the ones that should be eating first. My take on it, I don't support it one bit. I don't support LITA, I don't support tax dollars being spent into the private sector. That's called socialism or communism. And I'm a, I'm an American. So that's my two cents. No disrespect.
I, I personally know of two commercial properties that have been vacant for a while. People are interested in and they're looking at them. So there is people that come into Otero County, Alamogordo. They're seriously thinking about it, whether it ever happens. I don't know. What my concern is with, what's your involvement with the movie theaters and the bowling alley? Do you have anything to do with them?
We, I have to be careful in what I say, but yes, we have, we have provided assistance to Mr. Chan.
My, my whole deal, I've heard rumors that the Alon theaters will probably never open back up. I hope that's a vicious rumor because there again, then we'll have another big empty building. As far as that's going to be with through the city or whether the bowling alley opens up, I understand during this COVID time with the mandates and stuff, they can't be, but I just want to, hopefully somebody is pushing and make sure those people are going to open those doors back up that we spent too much money on.
I can tell you that I do sit on the Board of New Mexico IDEA and they're basically economic developers all through the state of New Mexico. And I know that that has been a conversation piece that we have. We have a paid lobbyist that we have incentive right now trying to handle some of those important details in regards to that. And so I don't, we, we're doing what we can in regards to assisting with that.
And I, I understand Commissioner Griffin's point when he's, if you put all your money into a business, you're going to pay more attention to it than if somebody. I do believe in some incentives, not fully support them, but if we can give them just a little piece of the pie and they bring the rest of it, then they're still going to have the strong incentive to keep their, their dollar effective. But I, I still feel, it's still a little enticing to try to get people to come to the area.
Absolutely. Just like I mentioned to you in regards to the car, the cardboard box manufacturer, he, that company provides boxes for Amazon and, and they want it to be right there with Amazon in El Paso. And, and so we were trying to attract them here, but, but again, the only reason we did not get it, because we, I was able to prove to them the shipments here, from here to Santa Teresa. The reason we were not able to do it is because the state of Texas had a higher fund and provided more dollars to them. So it's a very competitive market. There's over 100,000 economic development organizations who are all vying for one slice of the pie. We can't get the whole pie, we're just want the slice of the pie. And so we're all competing for the same project.
Thank you.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, this time we'll come up to agenda item number 11, unscheduled citizen communication. I do want to remind everyone, this will be a three-minute period. I want to remind the commissioners that this is a strictly a listen only, there'll be no comment, there's no decision made on any of this. So the swap will be on the TV. So first person, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Chairman Mathely. Paul Sanchez, solely representing myself in this comment, I have two things I just want to say. In regards to the last issue that Ms. Anderson was talking about and what Commissioner Griffin brought up about the LITA funds, unfortunately, what she said is 100% true, that we are in competition with many, many other communities. And the reality of business is, business is going to go where they have the best advantages to invest in. And so I think that that LITA money should be used very cautiously and very wisely and to a minimum amount. However, I don't think we should eliminate it because when you, when you do use that, businesses come in, they bring people, they bring GRT, which in turn results in adding money to senior centers, children's programs and things like that. But you have to look down the line with that. So that's the first thing I wanted to comment on. Second thing is, as I'm sitting here, I am, I'm also getting a lot of messages from people that are on social media. There are many people that are watching right now, the meeting, live streaming, okay? And I've received several comments, I just want to make you aware of, people are concerned about Commissioner Griffin and the fact that he is apparently sick or has bad allergies. He's not wearing a mask and they're wondering about his health. My question specifically is, when the commissioners come in the building, is their temperatures checked? Do they have to answer the same questions, you know, that we would have to answer as a regular person to come in? Now, I know I'm not going to get an answer on that, but I thought it should be important that all of you would realize that with Commissioner Griffin's microphone, as close as it is, out on the live stream, people are hearing every single breath that he's making. And they're honestly concerned he's sick. And that is all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Matt Ransom?
Here. Yes, my name is Matt Ransom and I want to respond basically to what she said, like, I agree 100% with Corey Griffin, that when you start getting these public-private partnerships, that's basically fascism. Because what you're doing is, what these private big businesses like to do, they're like lobbying for free money from the government. And at the same time, what the government does, they like to get these private businesses to do what the government can't do. And then the private business, they like to get the government to do the things they can't do, while the little guy, they don't get nothing. The mask mandate is a perfect example of it. There is no law in the 50 states that requires an individual to wear a mask or take temperatures or any of this garbage. But what it is, the government is bullying these businesses to get them to comply with a voluntary order. And people don't know what they're talking about. I'm not educated on Schoolhouse Rock. I read books. Now to go back to the commissioners talking about, oh, oh, they're trying to get Corey Griffin to resign. I'm going to go to the New Mexico Supreme Court. The New Mexico Constitution says, and this is how it was interpreted by the Supreme Court of New Mexico, felony convictions occurring during the term of office. A felony conviction that occurs during the term of office of an elected office disqualifies an elected official from continuing to hold office effective upon entry of a judgment or conviction. State versus King versus Logan, you cannot be removed from office unless you are convicted. Did you get a jury trial? What about due process? What happened to innocent until proven guilty? Did you get any of that? You can't be removed unless all that happens, unless you're convicted by a jury of your peers, by a felony, not a misdemeanor, it has to be a felony. So if you don't have any of those things, they can't remove you from office. And if they do remove you from office, I encourage you to sue the pants off of them because they're violating your rights. And they talk about you resign, why don't they resign? Why don't they resign? You don't have to resign nothing. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
I was hoping I could have his extra time. Thank you. I had two questions or sort of question statements. The first is, Commissioner Griffin spent some time telling us how uncomfortable it was for you to be in solitary confinement in the prison system in Washington DC. So I'm wondering if you have checked into the prison that Otero County has a contract with to see if there are any prisoners there that are in solitary confinement? And if you have checked on their contract? And if you have checked on their condition and have talked to them because you didn't like it one bit? Or if any of the other commissioners have checked in respect for Mr., what Mr. Griffin has said? The other statement I would like to make is that I would really like to take this mask off. And I cannot take it off until everyone wears a mask for a long time. Masks are one of our important securities, along with social distancing, to try to get a handle on the, the spread of this pandemic virus. And the sooner we take our masks off at this point, when we are still a hotspot in New Mexico, the more we're going to have to deal with the impacts of a virus all over the county. I want to take my mask off. I don't expect to be able to take it off at this point for another couple of years because there is no control, there is no common agreement for us to keep each other safe according to good science. And I want to take this mask off, but I can't do it until everybody wants to practice protection of each other. So I'll give my last moments to the next person.
Well, as you asked your question, I'd, I'd like to opportunity respond. That's why whenever Carolyn mentioned about the jail and we said that we would like to see the workers go.
That's not the private jail.
When did that, when did that take place? We've always been able to address people whenever they come to unscheduled. Have we not Pamela? Does the commissioners not typically have correspondence whenever people come for unscheduled communication or is this a rule that Paul, Paul made?
At the last meeting, the commissioners made that statement that there would be no comments made during unscheduled.
I don't know if I was in on that vote. Who, who, we might, how did, how did, so, so now you're going to silence? She, she came with two questions. If, I may Gerald. She came with two questions that she asked the commission board. This is a commissioners' meeting, not a commissioners' meeting, so we should be able to have the freedom to be able to respond to a question that somebody has in the, in the, in the communicat-, it's called communications, that's communication.
Commissioner Griffin, if she wanted questions and answers, she should have just rolled up on the scheduled communication. She could have asked, we could have answered everything there is. This on the three-minute unscheduled deal, there's no comments, just like I said a few minutes ago, they come in, they say what they want, and I even told them, there'll be no comments, no, no answers.
Why not? Why can't we talk? It's a commission meeting.
They need to schedule on the right.
What, what, it's just censorship. It's just trying to stop the communication. They say it's scheduled communication, but really, they don't want communication. I would love to respond to your question, but unfortunately, I can't. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I apologize on behalf of the county.
You don't have to apologize on.
Yeah, I do too. It should, we should be able to have communication with the people that come with questions.
If it isn't enough in the public jail.
Oh, really? Okay.
Can you not have a little bit of a, leave it alone. Kathleen Taylor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Catherine Tyler. I'm a member of the St. Francis de Paula Church in Tularosa. I wanted to make a few comments about wearing masks in church, might help you decide on item 17. I sing in a choir. We practice safe distancing and wear our mask as we enter, as we greet others and coming in contact with others. We sit six feet apart when we're singing and we do remove our masks in order to sing. We've been able to stay healthy during this for one year, but this last January, one choir member was in contact with someone having the coronavirus. That person gave the virus to the other six of us. Some of us were very ill. Two of our members were hospitalized and one passed away.
Sorry to hear that.
And so that, that's all, I, I just wanted to share that might help you decide whether or not churches should continue to wear masks. I personally am for it.
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, that's all the, that's all the people that signed up. We'll move to item 12, new business. Agenda item. Mark with Otero County Planning and Commission Chairman, who present the, the plan commission
Good morning, commissioners. I was elected at our last meeting two days ago to be the, or excuse me, a month ago, to be the new commission member that's going to head this up now. We've had resignation of two individuals and we gained two individuals. So we are still looking, we only have five members. Two of them are surveyors that during a lot of our plat reviews that they are involved with, they have to recuse themselves. So we still need to, to get a quorum on all of our issues. We still need two more members. So if you have two people that you have in mind, preferably scattered around the county, we would appreciate them on the board so we can have as, much as we can represent all the areas of the county. I would like to thank our assistant that takes care of all of our paperwork, Sylvia Tilbrook, who, who does an excellent job on coordinating everything between the members and, and all the other people that we, we have to come in contact with. We have a list that, that she already put in your, in your files of all the transactions and changes that we've had in the last year. And if you have any particular questions on them, then I would like to defer those to Sylvia. Because she is the subject matter expert on this. I am not. But I do bring organization and some ideas of where we have to go. Just listening to a lot of the problems this morning, they seem to circle around that we don't have a planning and zoning department. I know zoning sounds like a dirty word in this county, but still, it, it all involves our economic development, our roads, just everything. And right now, it's scattered. We don't have a, a engineer, we don't have a, a planner, who, a lot of these problems I see pulling them together and along with the airport in Timburon that I've gone up there a couple times to look at and, and to help out some of the residents with their issues on where, where this is all going to go. I, I just see that we need this planning and zoning. And I have put together roughly from our statement, our mission statement that's in, we have, I, I've just put what I think we need to do, where we need to go with this. Because we're missing a big chunk out of, out of the government that we need in order to facilitate some of these problems with, with, again, our bridge problem with Rialto Road, as well as some of our roads that are just literally potholed up. So I haven't had a conference with you all, but I'd like to give you some of my notes, what I think we have to start with. And this is just, what's in black comes out of our mission statement that's already in the book. And I just augment some of these ideas and what I think we should go, where we should go from here. And, and also I very much enjoy the advice I get from Michael. It just helps me out a great deal, so I don't get on the wrong toes. I'd like to really have a workshop to talk about some of these issues with you all, about where, where we can go with it. And I mean, when I talk to the city of Almagordo, they have this in place. They have a planning and zoning division. And I'm not saying that we, we have to go out there and just control people's lives, but we do need to enhance and bring in good businesses. We have to placate the Air Force Base out there with the people that, that are thinking about moving here that don't. We're on the edge of a space program. I think I'm running out of oxygen.
Yeah, pull that thing off. They don't work anyways, especially those, they just make it, those spandex ones like Paul's got on, the Stanford study shows that it just makes the, makes it spread even more.
Believe me, I, I've spent 24 hours wearing a gas mask and charcoal suit and I can tell you that.
Sure.
We go to, when you have to really put on stuff like that, it's to protect your life.
Yeah.
And, and I mean, so anyway, I would suggest that if we have a workshop in the future, we can start talking about this. Because I just see where, we, we just can't get all these needs met without people that can be full-time bringing it together. Not that anybody that's there now, between Pam and Sylvia, they do an excellent job, but they just can't interface with the public like we should be able to, like the city of Almagordo does. So we need to move towards that, but how do we do it? That's the question. And I think that's what we need to have answered. It can't be answered in just one planning and zoning commission meeting, but I think that we really need to get with you folks and find out, what do you see? What's your vision? And how can we accomplish this for all the citizens of this county? So.
Well, one, one thing, Mark, that I've been thinking about while you're, I'd sit on, sit in the audience on the, on the planning and zoning meeting. The city of Almagordo has a, when you go into the city hall, they have a window that you go to that you can talk to somebody. When the emergency services building is complete and Matt and a lot of his crew leaves, that will open up some offices. Maybe possibly we can get somebody that could sit, we could have a planning and zoning room where you come in, not so much come to Sylvia's desk or go to Diana's desk, but you go into a deal and they have, more likely it would still be Sylvia, they're doing the same thing, but they'd have a desk or office to come into with a lot of the records there, some of the information there would be a little more handy. Even yourself, if you have a desk in there, come in, if you're still on the chairman of it and stuff, if you have the time to sit in on some, some deals, you may have questions or something. So it would be nice if, if the planning and zoning could maybe present us with this proposal or something where we could, or some beginning place, you know, where we start.
Exactly. I think we've outgrown what we have right now. We're pushing responsibilities like Tom Porter. He's, he's almost our road engineer rather than just being a road shop supervisor. So he has to go out there and through his experience, he understands how roads have to be built. And, and I would say that we have cracked down on any developers that have come in and wanted to put in substandard roads. We, we've gotten on their case to say, hey, we're bringing it up to a state standard where 10 or 15 years from now, we're not dealing with roads like we have down in Escudero Gardens down there, down in the south part of town where you're driving through holes in the ground, they're so big, your car goes through and people are using the, the right of ways on both sides as roads now instead of using the road because it's so bad. And that's the type of development that I see is really going to cost the taxpayer a whole lot more in the end, rather than let's do it up front, let's get the right roads done. And mainly, that's going to be my push, is make sure that if we have developments come before us, that after everything else is done, it's mainly the homeowners and utilities to take care, but we always have the roads. And we have to have them safe enough so our service, our emergency and police services can go over them without wrecking their vehicles. So that's what I'm, my aim is for and where I'm going with a lot of this. And it's positive and I think it's good for everything else that happens in this county and after all, when Rome built its roads, they realized that was the most important thing they could do for their civilization, is make transportation easy for their citizens and their goods and services to move across, as well as their armies. So I don't have anything else. Do you guys have anything you want to talk to me about?
Appreciate you. Appreciate your efforts.
Well, I feel like since I'm one of those people they call triple dipper, I still have an obligation to help this government at the local level, even if I don't do it in uniform anymore.
Well, we appreciate you, Mark. Thank you very much.
That's it. And I hope you all, when we start having open meetings again, I get my next shot, my second shot next week.
All right.
So.
Good luck. Hope you don't cut away with the wheel.
Well, from having Agent Orange leukemia, I have to watch myself and I've been doing that for the last year, so I haven't been around to bother you folks.
Sure.
And attend the meetings and I know in the future I will be. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next item of new business will be request approval to schedule an advertising public hearing for the SRS Title III funds.
Matt Clark, Emergency Services Director.
And I'm Laura Doff. I'm the Executive Director of the South Central Mountain Resource Conservation and Development
Basically, we just need to request approval to do a public hearing so we can spend SRS Title III funds with Southwest RC&amp;D, who helps with our FireWise programs and other things. And Laura has a, a quick report over what has been done over the last year.
Commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to let you know what we've been able to accomplish. A large part of our efforts in addition to the FireWise and the education for our communities is the actual boots-on-the-ground thinning projects that we're able to do here in Otero County. We've been very busy in the last year and we anticipate being equally as busy this upcoming fiscal year. One of the most important things that we were able to accomplish for you is update of your community wildfire protection plan that has been submitted to New Mexico State Forestry and has been approved. We were able to do that through a grant from New Mexico Association of Counties, so that was at no cost to the county to be able to do that. And that's a very important document that as we go forward, it helps us with our planning, our strategic planning for where we're going to put our projects and what kinds of opportunities we're able to afford members of the population here in Otero County. One of the projects that we were finally able to complete, it was on hold for over a year because of the Mexican-spotted owl injunction, but that was the CFRP project at Maruchy in La Luz Canyons. That has been completed, it has been inspected and we're finishing up the final report on that. Timburon area, we are working with the Bureau of Land Management on that. We have completed Phase 1, Phase 2, and pretty much 75% of Phase 3 on doing thinning around those areas. That project alone, we've spent over half a million on that project. All total, last year, we were able to put 1.12 million on the ground in thinning projects. One of the important things about that is we also hire local contractors in doing that. So the money is injected right back into your economy here in Otero County. We have a large project at the Circle Cross project, that is in conjunction with the state land office. And we also have another project on Coleman Ranch that we're completing with that. Our Otero County Wooey project, which is through cooperation with the Otero Soil/Water Conservation District and State Forestry. We are nearly in completion of that one, that was $198,000 grant, we only have about $5,000 left on that. So we've been moving forward with all of those projects, completing those. Upcoming, we have Phase 4 of the BLM Timburon project, that is $246,000 that we'll be able to put on the ground. We'll continue with Circle Cross and Coleman Ranch. The new Otero County Wooey funds are $273,000, so we'll be putting, starting those projects. As soon as we finish up the last 5,000 we've got, then we move right on into doing that. So those projects will, basically, we're looking at about 1.1 million that we'll be able to go with thinning. Commissioner Griffin, on your question as to how we are actually deciding where funds go, several years ago, in con- several years ago, in conjunction with all of our land management partners, Otero County, BLM, State Forestry, U.S. Forest Service, we were able to complete what's called the Southern Sacramento Forest Restoration Plan. It's a massive document, and it includes all of our different areas. And we were able to put together a strategic plan based on how wildfire behaves, what are the most critical areas population-wise, those types of things. In addition, as Matt said earlier, the Otero Working Group is getting back on track. There was kind of a hiatus due to the COVID. It's just very difficult when you're dealing with normally maps and strategic looking at things where projects are going to go. But we're hopeful as we're moving forward, we'll be able to meet in person again and do that, but we have started doing that. The RC&amp;D is also looking at, one of our functions, like we said, is community outreach. We've kind of not been able to do a whole lot because we haven't been able to do the one-on-one meeting. Can't do the county fair, can't do all the different things that we've been able to do. So we're trying to think a little outside the box and are looking at really developing some social media strategies where we can put up. There's a lot of information out there about fire zones and fire protection, whether it's for your property or your home, all of the different things that you can do. We're trying to be able to kind of distill that and become a clearinghouse for that information so that people will be able at least to go online and educate themselves on what are best practices, not only for fire prevention, but healthy forests. Because ultimately, if we have a healthy forest, we're going to have a fire-resistant environment. So that's our ultimate goal, and we're, we're kind of exploring how to basically get our website built back up to where it is a repository for that kind of information and be able to reach out to people that way. So we absolutely appreciate the support that Otero County has been able to give us. These Title III funds allow us to keep a rural community forester on the payroll. And he's my guy in the field who actually goes and he inspects properties whenever anybody calls. Even if they don't qualify for one of our projects, he can go out and he can say, here's what an ignition zone looks like, here's why you need to take these trees down. And, and a lot of times, we get folks who are a little resistant to cut trees because that's why they move there to the mountains. They, they want to be able to see those trees, but when we can explain to them how the forest as a whole will be that much healthier, it improves the habitat for the wildlife, which is what they want to see too, we're able to do that education on a one-on-one basis. So we're, we're hoping to be able to continue that, and we really appreciate your support. Do you have any questions for me?
You say you have a forester that's working for you. Is he, is he working with strictly the private property owners on their deal? Or is he working with Forest Service also on trying to implement plans?
All of the above. We primarily work with private property owners, but because there is so much coordination required, he also works with all of our land management entities. One of the things that I tell folks about the RC&amp;D is because we are a nonprofit, the benefit to everybody is we can play in everybody's sandbox. And so we often are able to coordinate projects where there may be some issues between federal agencies, but they like working with us, so we can work with everybody else, and it kind of alleviates some of that. But yes, we, we do work with all of our different land management agencies, but as far as most of the projects that we do, it's the money goes to private property owners.
Well, I don't have a question when I've been called in. I just encourage you to keep it up because I don't think it's any question the great danger that catastrophic fire poses to the people on the mountain, especially right now with the way our weather patterns are, with as dry as it's been the last few years and this wind that's whipping outside. It's, it's, it's inevitable in my opinion, and I hate to say that. It's kind of like rodeo, and it's not if you get hurt, it's wind and how bad. And I feel like that's what we're looking at up on the mountain. So your efforts are, will hopefully prevent it from being quite as bad on some, or maybe the urban side of it. But yeah, I just encourage you. It's a, it's a good, it's a good cause. It's a good effort, and I mean, it's, it's worthwhile.
Sometimes we feel like we're spitting in the ocean, but you know, it's one of those things where we also can see real results. If you get the opportunity to go up to Timberon and see what this funding has been able to do and how good the properties are looking, I just wish we had more. And we continue as, as much as we can, so.
I have one other question on that with, with our slash pits. Do we have a slash pit in Timberon area?
I'm not sure what they have. Then I know they do have an area where some of the slash has been taken, whether it's cooperative with the landowner there or not, that I don't know.
This is again, with working with her, with our slash pit is, is very important. I'd love to see that open up for the council.
And we do have an air curtain incinerator, the RC&amp;D does, that is able to be used either in Otero or Lincoln County because we service both areas. What we have found, when we originally purchased that air curtain incinerator, our intention was to be able to do community cleanups and be able to let property owners bring to one central location their slash, and we would do the burning in conjunction with volunteer fire department personnel, that type of thing. What we ran into, and we're working on this, is currently the way the state regulations work with EPA and with trash is that if I bring slash from property A, B, and C, it becomes trash. And then I have to actually, even though it, it burns it down to a fine powder, I would have to bag that powder and take it to the landfill. So like I said, we're working on trying to change that interpretation. Whereas if I take that air curtain incinerator to a large ranch and it all comes from just one location, then it just becomes green material and the ash is fine. So it's an interpretation of how they're reading it, but we do have that available for use in Otero County. Anytime Matt wants to use it, it takes just a little bit because it's really slow if we can't call it over the road, but it is available for use here. So if we wanted to do something, say the slash pit is in Cloudcroft, but we wanted to take it to Timberon, we can do that. It's available for use.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner, do you have to set a date for that public hearing? This is not a community public hearing. You could probably do it at the next commission meeting.
So this meeting is going to be, will do, add a commission?
Yeah, it holds an actual public hearing by statute for these budgets.
So can, is this the idea? We can make a date for the next one?
Yeah, we're not going to set a date right now.
Like make a motion to set a date for the next, what's the next commission meeting?
April 8.
Yeah, 8?
Yes.
April 8. Do you want to give a second on that?
I'll second it.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
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 All right. Get to item number 14. Discuss and consider action on the request of the Otero County Fair Association for RV storage. Do you want to come up and talk about it? How are y'all doing?
Well, and you? Dean Hackett, Otero County Fair Association Chair, and this is Sheila Coca. She's the Vice Chair.
Some of the discussion that it come up with was my concern, and I don't know how this got around me. I mean, nothing bad on it. I, I was totally misunderstood on where the placement of the RV parking was going to go. I talked to my county manager. She was kind of thinking the same way that I was, that this was going to go in the back area, the new fitting area that they have where you put the rides and stuff, and not literally go into pavilion area. A lot of my big concerns on, on the pavilion area is when you start having, well, number one, if we need to have a place to do any kind of the emergency testing shops or anything like that, that would be a location that the county would use. Number two is if we was to have a big public meeting right now like we had in the past with the judges, we would have it under the pavilion. Number three, that's a million-dollar facility that taxpayers have paid and it has cost to not have an RV park right there. Number four, my concern is moving RVs in and out through that area. One is it's got to be during a certain time. Two is moving around in there, you're going to just, could take a chance of destroying the asphalt in the pavilion and flooring. And three, RVs are notorious for leaking the potty water everywhere. So you're going to have issues of staining of the asphalt, staining on the grounds. I, I see it being, I can see the RV parking in the back. That would be a great deal of my, my understanding. I, I love that. I know you have it that during the fair time, the RVs have to be removed. But I, I really have a lot of heartburn with flipping new man's pavilion area.
Well, we were actually going to utilize both the lot and the pavilion area. And this isn't something that the Fair Association just wanted to go out and do. It was COVID took every bit of any revenue we, we got. So we were just trying to think out of the box.
And I understand that for the creative revenue and stuff, I, I, I'm all for that. I just, I just don't agree with the pavilion area.
And, and you brought up some good points that weren't brought up during our meeting, like the RVs leaking. Wasn't something that we really considered, and when, you know, we got word of that, we were like, you know, that's, that's a good point. You know, we don't, we are very good stewards of that property, and we pride ourselves on taking care of that property very well for this county. And we, and nobody wants to damage it or ruin it.
So in your, if, if, in your proposal, are you, you still wanting to park the RVs in the pavilion area? Or are you going to take that out of there?
I think we need to go back to the board maybe.
Yeah, I think we would have to discuss it again, but I, I don't see a heartburn of not having it. It, it's, as she said, you know, we, we belong to an organization of fairs across the nation, and it's something that other places have done and been successful at, and that's why we started looking at it to begin with. Had, had we had a normal fair this year and had some income, wouldn't even be a consideration to, to do any type of stewardship. We wouldn't need that, so.
I, I understand when you go in and I admire you looking out that, get away from the box. But if, in that one area, I, me personally, that's just my opinion. I don't know if the other two commissioners have some comments on that.
How many units do you have out there right now?
We don't have any right now. We haven't jumped in to start any contracts because we, we found out we were on the agenda. We wanted to kind of hold off to see, you know, because ideally, if we don't have to do it, it would be better to leave the facility open for use for, you know, whatever comes up throughout the year. It was just that this, last year, we had no revenue, not one dime. It's been tough, and we have an awesome employee that I want to keep because she does great things for our facility. And we were just thinking outside of the box.
I'd support you in what you felt like you needed to do to stay alive. You know, I know that you guys have ends that you're trying to beat. You're people you're trying to keep employed and, and you have a lease agreement on the facility. So I don't feel like me or any of like other commissioners really should be able to sit back and go, yeah, well, you can do this and you could do that. Who are we? You know, y'all are, y'all are, I mean, y'all are trying to, y'all are trying to survive. You're trying to make ends meet. You're trying to do your best out there. And I'd support you through that, you know? I mean, I understand zero concerns about, you know, maybe, maybe some of the RVs leaking out, potty water, whatever. But, you know, I mean, it, it's, you guys are your own, you guys, you guys are your own body. You guys are your own minds. You guys have brains. You guys, you guys are the ones on the ground out there that are taken care of. Well, we're not. So I don't, I don't feel like, I feel like we should be able to give you the graces to try any idea that you want to try. This is a difficult time right now. Like Dean said, if it wasn't for the fair being canceled, you guys wouldn't be in this position. But you guys are trying to do what you can do, try to keep your door, keep the place in shape. And I think that the county, the best thing the county would do, could do, is just support you through that effort. So I'd be in full, I'd be in full support of you guys doing what you need to do.
And well, the, with the pavilion area, you did, you did contract it, did you try to remain open for county uses for any kind of emergency services?
Not, not that I'm aware of. I, I believe they can do, do what they want with the property as the managers.
So when that pavilion was built, you quit me if I'm wrong, when that made our contract?
At least.
Was that through the tax dollars of Otero County?
Yes.
So we built a million-dollar RV storage?
I'll call it what you may.
Well, we built a million-dollar fair pavilion, but since the state won't let us have the fair, what else are we supposed to do? You know, we got to, we got to try to do something.
Well, I understand that, Mark. I just can't see if we do get to, these people signed a contract with them. They've got to this time, they have to move the RVs out during fair time and stuff. What if another organization wanted to do this, like the Burning of the Bull and have the dance and stuff in there and have these other functions?
It is their organization.
Let me help. In that pavilion, with what it was designed for, with community projects to go on, the capitals, if we need an emergency testing area. I mean, there are electrical hookups through there. There's 30 X tons there. That was my understanding, was in there for the fair to have electrical fields for the all their stuff. Don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to, but I just can't see that facility for that. You, you shut it down when you do that.
And I agree, but we're shut down. You know, literally, there's no event. It takes a year to plan a fair, which we are actively planning to have a fair for 2021. But, you know, right now, we are shut down, and so that's why we were thinking out of the box. And as far as the emergency testing, we have talked to Matt Clark, and he really didn't want to use the pavilion. He wanted, he had, he had different plans. He wanted new buildings and come in one gate and go around the other. So that's not preventing that from happening. But I think really, we'll go back to the board and we'll just kind of reevaluate. You know, God willing, we'll have a fair, and this won't even be an issue.
For me, it would be like if I, if, if we had a, if y'all were renting a restaurant from us, and then all of a sudden the restaurant gets shut down, and you came in here going, you know, I'm still obligated for my agreement. Can I sell furniture? Can I, can I, can I just? You, you adapt. You adapt and you move with the times, and I commend you on that, looking outside the box. And look at it, look at it, look at another avenues to try to, and I, I, I think it's, I, I, I mean, if you guys, you guys have, you guys have good minds, you have good way, you have a great board out there. We have confidence in you. I think that we should allow you to try whatever you need to try during this difficult time without sitting back going, well, it wasn't built for an RV park. Well, who cares if you could, if you could, if you could make it, have to make your ends meet by making an RV park for a short time, we hope. I would have no problem with it, and I don't think the county has a right to step in and say, no, you can't do this or that.
And that was our definite, that was our definite idea, you know, was it no more than a short time, you know? Hopefully this would be done. We, we would pull everything out by May. We would be able We, we would pull everything out by May, we would be able to start having events in there, uh, et cetera. So this, this was just something to, to get us, an ends to a means to get us through for a portion of time. Um, so, and, and we're working our best to try to, and we'll, we'll go back and look. You do bring up some valid points that, that I think the board does need to look over and, and make a decision. We probably should not have those vehicles in there. And, uh, you know, it's, that wasn't something that we ever really truly looked at on that part of leaking stuff, leaking and whatever. Um, but we, we can go back and definitely talk about that. I think the, the outside area would probably still bring some income, um, and it would be in this, you know, definitely out of the way, as you said, that, uh, new area where they put the rides.
And that would still be a very, I would feel a security area back there with the toll and the benches and stuff like that. And however y'all working out access, that's, that's a problem. Uh, there, Art, there's, you need to thank pretty quick, but I know there's a big RV storage deal just now being built on very far.
Well, we're not in competition with them, so that's okay. It's, uh, you know, because we're in the position that we're in, we wouldn't be able to have them there all year anyway. So I, you know, we're not even sure that it will work. Um, it's, it just comes down to, it's something we wanted to try.
And I'd just like to make the point, I don't think people realize how much our overhead is to keep that facility going, to keep the RV dump station and water going. People use that for free. We do have a donation box up there, you know, to try to help offset that, but that does not bring in very much at all. But it, it costs us around $6,000 a month just to keep that facility open. That comes out of our general fund and without having any rentals, any events throughout the whole year, it's really hurt.
So you, you've had a few events in there. I know with the youth, uh, you had the Cap Show or State Light, some type of a show.
Yeah.
Which at least there's a little bit coming in and hopefully, my understanding, there's gonna be some more scheduled maybe for that, so I hope.
Well, those types of events don't really bring in a bunch of revenue. Uh, it, those are, usually, we let them do those for free because it's 4H and FFA. We couldn't do that this year for that particular event because, um, 4H is not having any, um, we're not sponsoring anything during the COVID time. So we weren't able to, to let them use it for free because we wanna support those, uh, groups. And, um, so, you know, we haven't gotten the bills for water and electric of that event, but we're anticipating, you know, maybe a fair bit or break in that.
Well, and in my opinion, that's, that's, we've gotta support our 4H and our FFA. I mean, that's, we've got to. I mean, I think that's our last line of our Western heritage around here.
Right.
So it's really important to me that we sponsor those kids and take care of our 4H club. So I appreciate you guys being on the board and keeping that place going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Agenda item number sixteen, request approval of resolution number oh three dash one one dash two one backslash, backs black, backs, anyway, one oh nine dash forty six, resolution calling upon the U.S. Department of Justice and the Federal Bureau of Investigation to investigate the destruction of the Soldier's Monument in Santa Fe Plaza.
Yes. This was a, a gin item that I had Michael prepare. Those of y'all that, um, keep up with the news know that, uh, the, the Soldier's Monument or the Obelisk in downtown Santa Fe was destroyed last Columbus Day, um, by a group of thugs. And, uh, it was done so in broad daylight, um, and it was no secret that they were going to do it. Uh, but I'd like to go ahead and read the resolution before, um, we continue with this letter. Um, the resolution reads as, whereas the Soldier's Monument in the Santa Fe Plaza in the city of Santa Fe was dedicated in eighteen sixty seven, whereas the Soldier's Monument honored soldiers who died in the Civil War in the battles of Valverde, Canadale Apache and Glorietta Pass, as well as those who died in conflicts with Indians. Whereas the Santa Fe Plaza, including the Soldier's Monument, was added to the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen sixty six. Whereas a mob destroyed the Soldier's Monument in broad daylight on October twelfth, twenty twenty. Whereas public officials of the state of New Mexico and the city of Santa Fe, namely Governor Michelle Lujan Grisham, Attorney General Hector Baldairas, State Police Chief Tim Johnson, Mayor Allen Weber, and Santa Fe Police Chief Andrew Padilla failed to act to prevent the destruction of the Soldier's Monument despite the known threats to the monument. Whereas the city of Santa Fe and its police department failed to provide security for the monument in advance of the riot. Whereas the Governor Lujan Grisham and Chief Johnson failed to dispatch the state police to protect the monument. Whereas there were no arrests the day of the riot, even though the mob destroyed the monument in plain view of dozens of witnesses. Whereas the Santa Fe Police Department allowed a suspect to go free at the behest of the rioters. Whereas after the violence began, the Santa Fe Police Department failed to dispatch officers to stop the rioters from destroying the Soldier's Monument. Whereas the failure of state and local officials should be investigated by an outside entity. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Otero County, New Mexico, that, the Board calls upon the federal government acting through the United States Department of Justice and the Federal Bureau of Investigations to conduct an independent investigation of both the destruction of the Soldier's Monument in the Santa Fe Plaza and the failure of state and local officials to prevent the destruction of the monument. The Board calls upon the federal investigation to examine the identity of the rioters who destroyed the Soldier's Monument, as well as their accomplices, accomplices in the conspiracy. The failure of state and local officials to respond to threats to the Soldier's Monument ahead of October twelfth, twenty twenty. The failure of state and local officials to have security at the Soldier's Monument despite the known risks to it. The failure of Governor Lujan Grisham to dispatch the state police to protect the Soldier's Monument. Why there are no arrests the day of the destruction of the Soldier's Monument despite the incident happening in broad daylight in plain view of dozens of witnesses. Why the Santa Fe Police Department released a suspect at the behest of the rioters. Why the Santa Fe Police Department failed to dispatch officers after the violence had begun in order to stop the rioters from destroying the Soldier's Monument. And the emails of Governor Lujan Grisham, Attorney General Baldairas, Chief Johnson, Mayor Weber, Chief Padilla and their staffs to determine what these officials knew about the threats to the Soldier's Monument and why they failed to act. Um, I have this on this agenda, this request made to the Federal Bureau of Investigations as well as the Department of Justice because this event that took place in the plaza of Santa Fe was allowed to take place. Um, it was no question that there was a lead up. It was no question that this Obelisk was in danger of being destroyed on Columbus Day. There was already threats, those that partook in the destruction of this monument in, in, in regards to newspaper articles, felt like they were only honoring Mayor Allen Weber's, uh, wishes that it was to be destroyed. Um, Paul, if you could mi, if you don't mind?
Oh, sorry. You let it turn up?
Yeah. Um, you know, if, if, uh, if we don't do something, if we don't do something, if, if, cause the Obelisk that was erected in eighteen sixty seven wasn't the mayor's of Santa Fe's, uh, property to destroy. Didn't belong to him. It didn't belong to the city of Santa Fe. It didn't belong to, to, to those officials. It belonged to the people of New Mexico. It was a part of New Mexico's history. Whenever we send friends or family to go visit Santa Fe to see it as the tourist spots, that was always one that they could go see. And now it was destroyed and while the city officials turned their backs during its destruction. And so I, unlike many others, are willing to give somebody the opportunity to be innocent until proven guilty, um, and not to accuse, uh, unjustly. But what this letter would do is simply request an outside investigation into why that property wasn't protected and why the governor didn't dispatch state police officers down there that were right up on the hill. And this, this was an all-day event. There, there's needs to be questions that are answered because, again, that property didn't belong to the governor or to Mayor Allen Weber. That property belonged to the people of New Mexico and our children, and our children's children. And if, if we allow, and if we allow this to take place, there's many other statues and many other monuments that people right now are offended by, that they're gonna be doing the same thing to those. They've already made threats, they're already trying to do it. The statue of Don Juan Onate in, in, out in downtown, um, that's one that they're, that they're focused on right now. If we allow them to just go out and destroy our public properties without any pushback, they're gonna completely destroy all the culture of New Mexico. They're gonna destroy all of the history of New Mexico and those like Allen Weber and others are just simply going to allow it to happen. So that's why I had this, this written up, to at least request the FBI to do an investigation because those that are in office, we've sworn an oath to protect those properties, to protect the public's properties and the public's investments. Allen Weber and Michelle Grisham swore an oath to protect that Obelisk. Now all we need to know, find out is if they did, if they did honor their oath. So that's why I brought this before you guys today.
Is the FBI gonna be moved to do anything by our resolution?
I don't know, no. I mean, um, the FBI moves in mysterious ways. I don't know.
Hey.
I did sign up.
I can't, we had.
I'm down, need to hold on and Michael Blair.
No, I was finished. I was finished, sir. Thank you.
So we all know what these resolutions really value of Otero County. So, boy, what are you, what are you wanting Otero County to do here?
I want, no, Otero County to approve a letter to request an investigation by the Department of Justice and the FBI in why that property wasn't protected on that day, why it was allowed to be destroyed in broad daylight without any police or state, any city police or state police being dispatched to protect it.
Well, it's tough because I agree with you. I mean, I, a lot of these, um, statues and stuff that are getting torn down are literally erasing our history. So I mean, I agree with you on that. I did do some reading on this statue and it's, it's been pretty controversial because of the wording about the savage Indian. So I, I mean, we've got neighbors up in Mescalero that I don't think are gonna appreciate that. And the, you know, calling it a soldier statue, I think of, of our soldiers, well, basically three sides of that were to the Union soldiers for the Civil War, which I know that's still part of our history. So I mean, I'm with you in as far as protecting our culture, our history, and I think by tearing things down, it just silences the, um, conversation around it. I just, I don't know how much good this is actually gonna do.
Well, in regards to the remarks that was made about Native Americans on the side of it, that had already been chiseled off of the monument. That wasn't still on there.
I know.
That was destroyed a long time ago. And this was a monument that recognized Union soldiers.
Mm-hmm.
How, what is, what offensive is that? But if it's offensive or if it's not offensive, there's such thing as the law. And if we're gonna come to a place in society where we're gonna choose to remove a public property, then there's legal recourse that need to be, take, take place to do that. You don't just allow a lot, a mob of deranged liberals to go out because they're offended by something.
What about deranged?
To destroy, to destroy. Is that not what they did?
That's what you did in the Capitol.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Griffin, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I just, I approve any kind of destruction of any, any history. My, my big question is, is why hasn't Santa Fe done anything on this investigation?
That's my question too.
What Otero County, I don't.
It's part of our history, Gerald.
What we're gonna, what Otero County can do in Santa Fe.
But that, that property, that property belonged to us. It belonged to our children. It wasn't their right to go destroy a public property and part of our history, part of our culture, you know? It wasn't, so we, it's not about Santa Fe, it's about New Mexico. That monument didn't belong to Santa Fe, it belonged to the people of New Mexico. And what Santa Fe allowed to happen to our public property just needs to be investigated through a letter that we request the FBI to do an investigation, just find out, go ask Mayor Weber why they didn't send some city police officers down there. I guarantee there was people calling in, there was people calling in saying, hey, they're down here destroying this, what are you guys gonna do? And they refused to respond. We have to hold them to the count. If it was the city police chief, if it was the mayor, if it was the governor, whoever it was, but if we allow thugs to go and destroy public properties, then they need to be held to the count. And by us moving on this, passing on this letter, it's just a letter of request for the FBI to open an investigation and ask the governor. She should be questioned, as we all should be. She should be questioned on why she didn't send the state police down there right off the hill to protect a public monument.
Why is there any point there?
Well, let's vote on it, move on it, and then we'll let the, and we'll see if the FBI will do their job and go up and ask some questions and then open an investigation. I mean, there's nothing wrong with an investigation. An investigation will only prove your innocence, if you're innocent.
Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I did sign up.
Excuse me?
I did sign up for number sixteen also.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Please state your name and record.
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you for letting me speak. Paul Sanchez, again speaking solely on myself, and I have an extremely simple question about this particular, uh, uh, resolution. We spend a huge amount of time in this meeting and many other meetings, uh, complaining about state government, federal government coming into Otero County and making us wear masks and locking down our buildings and all the rest of that stuff. We want them to stay out of our county, okay? We wanna manage our own stuff. And I absolutely think those are valid things that we should be talking about. My question is, is this is in Santa Fe County and we have no say over another county whatsoever. So I have no understanding why, if we don't want anybody else coming here, why would we wanna interfere or pass a resolution calling them out for something they did there? Okay? And, and it, I, I happen to, by the way, agree one thousand percent that it was a criminal act that took the statue down, that it should be investigated. I agree with all of that. But we are not Santa Fe County. And if we're gonna say to other people, don't come here, I think it's the highest amount of hypocrisy to then say we should say something about what goes on up there. If it was a state issue, that's a different thing. But that, we're calling out Santa Fe city and county in there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time, sir.
And if I may, it, it is a state issue. It's not, it wasn't Santa Fe's property. That, that property belonged to the state of New Mex, that property belonged to my children as well as your, your grandchildren and children. as well as your grandchildren and children. You know, so, to say that we can't say anything about what goes on up in Santa Fe, well, so we just let them destroy all the public property that belongs to the people of Santa Fe and federal property? It was a federal monument. That thing was erected before New Mexico was even a state, 1867. So, that was, that's federal property. The FBI shouldn't have to be requested. The FBI should already be investigating federal, the destruction of federal property. We'll just give them a little bit of a nudge to do their job and see if they'll do it. But to have the position that we can't say about anything that goes on up in Santa, well, if it was, maybe if it was internally inside the way Santa Fe's doing their government, if Santa Fe was wanting to not have to wear masks, then, yeah, I would agree with him that we shouldn't go up there, get into Santa Fe's business and try to manipulate what they, but this isn't about Santa Fe's government or Santa Fe's business. This is about federal property that was destroyed and they, and somebody allowed it to happen. They didn't go down there and protect it. This was an all-day event, a big lead-up. There was huge threats. And there was even people quoted in the paper that said they only felt like they were fulfilling Mayor Allen Weber's requests. You want to talk about Trump inciting something? What about Weber inciting the destruction of a, of a federal monument? You know? I don't see anything wrong with this. It's not going to be damaging. All it's going to do is just make a simple request to the FBI that they look into why that was allowed to be destroyed on that day. I mean, there's laws against what happened down there by destroying that obelisk.
Hi, my name is Walt Kaufman. I'm from Weed, New Mexico, for 20 years or so. It's nice to be here today. I find myself surprisingly agreeing with Mr. Sanchez. I think that it's reprehensible what happened in Santa Fe. I've been there many times, been to that particular obelisk before. It's a terrible thing. Those people should have been put in jail. I suspect that law enforcement and the mayor and the others should go to jail, too. It's my opinion. However, this is Otero County. If this had happened here in Otero County and the sheriff hadn't arrested everybody involved, well, then I'd be saying, hey, let's, let's get after the sheriff, let's take some action, let's do something about it. But frankly, I think our plate's full here in Otero County. And I'm not sure of the point in trying to take on the state of New Mexico and the Federal Bureau of Investigation and all that. So, I would say that it's a bad idea to, to, it won't hurt anything. I think that's perhaps Mr. Griffin's point, Commissioner Griffin's point. It's not going to hurt anything to do it. If you approve it, I don't think it's going to ruin our county. But I don't really think it's going to do anything for our county. Thank you.
But, but again, it's not, it wasn't the city's property. It was the state, it was the state of New Mexico's property.
I understand your point on that. I agree with you 100%.
All right, this is Matthew Ransom again. I just want to say about these resolutions that, that this board has, has rights under the 14th Amendment, equal protection, equal protection clause on corporate citizenship and the First Amendment. So, when you write these resolutions, you're executing the county's First Amendment rights. So, as far as I'm concerned, you should be using, doing it more. Now, are you going to force the federal FBI and the feds to do something? That's something else. But you should set an example. And you say, oh, it's up in Santa Fe. Like he said, it was a federal monument. The whole country should be concerned about it. Now, the whole country is unaware of it, but still, you guys are aware of it. And you need to be defending your monuments. And like you said, it's a federal monument. And I just want to say, like you say, oh, that's Santa Fe. If you don't do anything to defend that, it will happen, it will happen in this county. All your monuments down here are going to be under attack. So, you need to set an example now that is not going to be tolerated. And that's, and that's my opinion, and I'm standing on the First Amendment and the Constitution. And the county should, too. So, I'm in full support. Will it do anything? Probably not. But you should still do it to say where you stand. You have a right to be heard. You either be heard or whoever holds your peace. And that's where we're at right now. People need to start speaking up.
Because there is a huge move to remove all of our culture, anything that, you know, anything that anybody finds any offense by, they're wanting to go tear it down. And that's not the way legal, law-abiding people do things. We follow the law, we follow legal recourse. And that's all we ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Keep it short. My name is Stephanie DeBois. I'm from Tularosa. I've lived there for 30 years. I'm one of those Democrats who wants to see dead. I wish you had as much passion for Tularosa. You got elected, you made all kinds of promises, you never showed up. You never called, you never came before us and asked us about our water, our infrastructure.
Butter, water.
But I wish you had that same passion that you have for a statue in Santa Fe. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
I don't know. I'm really torn on this. I mean, I see both sides of it, you know? I'm, I'm really torn.
I just want to bring up about this subject, that the FBI has caught those people. I watch the news every night and they have identified them and they use the same technology that Walmart uses on facial recognition and they've got them all. So, I think you're, you've already addressed something that while you were gone, this was a news item for a couple nights in the news, just so that you know.
But, but I do know that there's been some arrests made on the people on the ground, but that's not where the real hard questions need to be asked at, you know? I mean, all, those people that got arrested on the ground are almost victims in this case because they were just allowed to do it. They probably felt like they were, they were, they felt, probably felt like they had the right to do it because the police were just standing off on the side watching them do it. So, really, they're, they could almost be seen as people that got caught, caught in the crossfire in it, you know? I mean, the police should have been dispatched around that monument and they should have used whatever force was necessary to keep people from destroying a part of New Mexico's history and culture.
All right, at this time, I'll make a motion for approval, request approval of resolution number 03-11-21/109/46. Resolution calling the U.S. Department of Justice and Federal Bureau of Investigation to investigate the destruction of the Soldier Monument in Santa Fe Plaza.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Request approval of resolution number 03-11-21/109-47. Resolution opposing the state's unconstitutional health orders.
This is just one more resolution. I know that we've already got one on the books prior that we've already moved and passed on. I'll go ahead and read the resolution and then we can consider it. The resolution reads as, whereas the governor of New Mexico and the New Mexico Secretary of Health have issued dozens of orders regarding the COVID-19 virus and whereas it's been a year since the first of these health orders, which have repeatedly been renewed without the involvement of the state legislature or local officials, and whereas these health orders have worked hardships on the people of New Mexico through the closure of businesses and schools, and whereas these orders are unconstitutional, violating the rights of the people of New Mexico, whereas these orders have infringed on the right to the free exercise of religion that is guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New Mexico, and whereas the Supreme Court of the United States has found that health orders issued by California and New York have violated the First Amendment by a fairly limiting worship, and whereas these health orders infringe on the right of the people to peaceably assemble, and whereas these health orders infringe on the right of the people to economic liberty, and whereas these health orders infringe on the right of people to use private property, and whereas these health orders infringe on the right to travel, and these health orders infringe on the right to be free of excessive fines and state laws giving official, officials emergency powers were meant to be used for short-term problems, not long-term ones. The New Mexico Legislature has three sessions since the health orders were first issued and has not been asked to approve these orders, and the use by state officials of emergency powers for extended periods is anti-democratic and endanger of the rights of the people. Now, therefore, being resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Otero County, New Mexico, that the Board denounces the unconstitutional health orders issued by the governor of New Mexico and the New Mexico Secretary of Health. The Board declares that those officials who enforce or abide by these unconstitutional health orders violate their oaths of office and their duty to the people of New Mexico. Now, whenever I asked Michael, reached out to Michael to write this resolution, we went back and forth a few times. I still don't feel like it's right where I wished it would, kind of would have been. But what I really, the objective that I, is, that I really want to be embraced by this is the unconstitutionality of what is going on in our state today. It's totally unconstitutional what the governor and the state of New Mexico is doing, infringing on the rights of people that should live on a constitutional premise of such a thing called freedom. The last commissioner, or last commissioner meeting before I spoke, whatever day, whatever Sheriff Black was here, I, I asked Sheriff Black if his opinion was that these coronavirus mandates were unconstitutional, in which he said yes. And I believe that, I am in agreement with Sheriff Black, that they are unconstitutional. And we vowed an oath to protect the Constitution. Any laws that are, that we would have an opinion on, that would be unconstitutional, we should stand on our oath to protect that Constitution, no matter what the cost, no matter what the price. I mean, right now, we have a community where our businesses are completely decimated. Everybody's going out, our economy is totally in the tank. We have children that haven't been able to go to school for a year and their lockdown orders are much different than the governor's in her mansion. Whenever she gives stay-at-home orders to those living, like I do and many of you do, where you're locked to the confines of a mobile home or a, or a camp trailer, life is much different for these people than they are for the elitists of Santa Fe who live in mansions. And those are the people that we have to watch out for. Our oath is to the very least of them. And right now, in New Mexico, our suicide rate is through the roof, addiction is through the roof. I'm sure David, I'm sure David could testify of a lot of this. Alcoholism, people are, can't pay their bills, people are getting evicted from their homes. And the one place that they could maybe have representation at would be on the local level, would be on, through the county commissioner and the county sheriff, by us working together. But the only way that we would be able to do this is to keep anybody outside of the county that wants to enforce what we have already called unconstitutional mandates. Anybody, if it's the health, if it's the New Mexico Health Department, if it's the New Mexico State Police, if it's any federal agencies that want to come in and cite or harass small business owners for merely trying to feed their family and trying to survive, then it would take the county sheriff, along with the county commission, to tell those entities to stay out of Otero County. That would be the rubber hitting the road. That would be more than just words. That would be action. And if we don't take action, I don't know, I don't know where we're going to come out of this. I don't know what the result's going to be. Do we just, do we just let people continue to, to kill themselves with, with suicide and with addiction and drugs and alcohol and depression and abuse and all the evils that are coming along with this so-called pandemic? Because the real pandemic is inaction. The real pandemic is us local officials not doing anything to protect the people and to honor our oaths. That's the true pandemic right here. The governor of New Mexico right now is not in touch with the people of New Mexico. We can see that in everything that she does. Whenever she spends over $16,000 this last year on alcohol and food for the governor's mansion, while the rest of New Mexico is stuck in our, in our homes and lockdown orders, not able to go to school, not able to see our friends, not able to go see loved ones in the hospital, not able to go see loved ones in nursing homes because we're being mandated by an unconstitutional state government, it's time to take a stand. If we don't, we lose. I feel like we already have lost to an extent. We've lost a lot. We've lost the last year. And we can take a stand, but it's going to take an actual stand. It's going to actually take standing up and pushing back. And this is why Santa Fe hates me so bad. This is why there's so many, there's why so many of you here hate me so bad. Because I will actually use my voice and I will actually take a stand and I will actually honor my oath to the people that I have been elected by, whatever the cost is. But I can't, I can't do, I mean, I can't do it alone. There's nothing that we can do alone. We need to stand together. Or, I don't know, I mean, David, you know how much I love you and I support you and I agree with you that these laws are unconstitutional. And if the laws are unconstitutional, then it's time that we step up and keep them from being enforced by the New Mexico State Police, the New Mexico Environmental Department, any other outside enforcement agencies that want to enforce unconstitutional laws, we have to push back on. We have to say no more. We've had enough. We, we're past the breaking point. Or, or, or we're going to have Dean and Sheila in here next year trying to find out maybe a new way to, to, to fund the fair because we won't be having a fair again. You know, our children have already been robbed enough. And the only reason why they've been robbed is because we've allowed them to be robbed. We've allowed it to happen to ourselves. That's all I've got to say. And I know that I drifted away from the resolution that's on the table and I apologize for it, but I just wanted to get it off of our chest. We got it. We got to stand up. I, I mean, I, I don't know. Maybe life is good for everybody else, but it's not real good for me, you know? I hate that my son couldn't even go experience his first year at kindergarten. I got to, you know? Now, our kids in our schools are not even, have been robbed of their homecoming, you know, their sports, all of their stuff. And we have a, a government that is so out of touch that they will allow kids to play football and basketball, but they won't allow them to go sit in a classroom next to each other. What sense does it make? Nothing makes sense. They'll let them go play sports, but they won't let the band come play up in the, in the stands. It's nothing that they're doing is making sense. And, but we just allow them to do it because we're so passive and we're just like a bunch of sheep. But those of us who hold an oath, we have a different place, we have a... But those of us who hold an oath, we have a different place, we have a different call, we have a different place that we can fight from. And I am willing to, I've been willing to for the last year. And I just wish that we could do so collectively together and not be bitter or, or, or judgmental, but only do it for our children and, and their future. Because they're the ones that are getting robbed right now. They're the ones. We already got to enjoy America. We already got to enjoy the fruits of America. And now our children are being robbed of the American dream because we allow them to be robbed.
I'd like to say something on this. Two things. The, the resolution that we have in, that is on the books right now, I'm gonna read to you, uh, the notes on it. Otero County calls upon the state to issue orders addressing the coronavirus that are tailored to the circumstances of East County instead of a uniform statewide order that do not consider local conditions. Number two, Otero County calls upon the state to rescind the proposed five thousand dollar fines. They violated the pro, pro, perpetuation of the excessive fines contained by the federal and state bill of rights. Number three, Otero County calls upon the state to narrow the orders regarding wearing of the mask to travelers so they apply to those who are ill with the coronavirus or have been exposed to somebody that has. So basically, we're trying to implement another resolution that already shows Otero County feelings toward the resolution.
But I'm, I'm not calling on the state, I'm calling on the county here. We could do it. We could open our county right now if we wanted to. If we had the blessing, if David were to come up here and sit down and we had the graces of our county sheriff and we had us three in agreement, we could say today, Otero County is at one hundred percent fully open. We could do it. I'd be willing to do it. I'd make the motion.
And the legal health orders on that, the, the state, we're not, we can't do that, can we?
I do not believe we have the authority to countermand state law. We don't have any sort of veto power.
We could, we could, if we stood up to it, we could. You know, maybe if we got a little bit stronger, we could. Maybe if we didn't just go, oh, well, it's state law, you know, I mean, freedom and liberty were, 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 were bought by people actually taking a stand, not by going, oh, it's state law from England, we can't, sorry. We could take a stand. We could have a seventeen seventy-six right here. We could open our county up. And we could do so with the people of Otero County because our sheriff could, could, could form a posse or a sheriff's posse or militia like the Constitution gives him the right to do and he could start deputizing men right now. I mean, we, if we have to make that kind of stand, we've got to. If not, we're never, if not, we're just, all the good people, unfortunately, not, I shouldn't say all the good, all the good people, I know that there's always a play on my words. A lot of the productive people in our county or le, or New Mexico are leaving. I know lots of them that are moving to Texas right now. Lots of them that are moving to Texas. Because what, what do we have here in New Mexico? Nothing. We have all of our businesses closed and our economy shut down. I mean, we could dig in and take a stand. I'm ready. David knows I'm ready. David knows I've been half-cocked for a year. And we could open our school, we could, not, we couldn't open them. We wouldn't open anything. We would just give those businesses the liberty to open themselves. If they wanna open, they could. If they wanna stay closed, they could. If they wanna make everybody wear a mask, they could. But that's where, they should be making the choices, not us. That's what's, that's individual liberties, individual freedoms. That's what our country was built on. Right now, we're up underneath an oppressive government that's forcing us, saying, you do this or else, you do that or else. Or else what? They can't hit us any harder than they already have the last year. But it'll take a stand. But I guarantee you, there's a lot of men and women in Otero County that are ready to stand right now. Ready. We're ready to get our schools open. We're ready to, for our kids to be able to play sports. And we wanna go watch them and even have the concession stand open too. Wow. What a big benefit that would be. But we could do it. Or we could at least give Jared Perry and the school board the freedom to decide if they wanted to do it or not.
Any other discussion on this?
Well, I have said that I would also. I am totally agree. Does anybody in this room understand what socialism is?
Yeah, I do.
Do you understand?
Yeah, we do.
That is the government, they can total control of you, everything that you do. Everything that you do. It's government and they are in control. But our constitution is being destroyed. We no longer have freedom of speech and, Koi, you've been through that enough.
You're speaking now, aren't you? Are they making you stop?
You know what? Stephanie, several years ago, you ran for committee committee.
Yes, I did.
You did. I did not agree with one of the Republicans in our district.
I'm voting for your district.
And by hell, I voted for you.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yeah. But you have been a left-wing ever since. You have never changed one eye of mine.
Proud of it, thank you. My partner was a pro-farm survivor. There were no--
Please, please, can we just--
We're not gonna, I love your partner. But if we do not stand for our rights, we are going down.
That's right.
Absolutely. We have a constitution to stand by and this is what we should be supported with. It doesn't have, Santa Fe, isn't Santa Fe our state capital? Doesn't Santa Fe, aren't we proud of Santa Fe because it, or it used to be? And then we talk about Santa Fe likes another city. It's not another city, it's our state capital. Something that we should be proud of. But I am tired of not, people not being able to speak. And I guarantee you that Sanchez here, he has, he's made himself very popular with his ideas and with his thinking and nobody's stopped him from speaking. But I'm telling you right now, we better be starting to say that forever.
You're right.
One thing on this item two on the resolution, the Board declares that those officials who enforce or abide by these unconstitutional health orders violate their oath of office and their duty to the people of New Mexico. If I were to say, okay, nobody has to wear a mask, open up, that would be a lawsuit waiting to happen. First time, if the county says, open it up, go. I don't like this mask, believe--
Do you think it's protecting you?
Let me finish, please. So if, so if the county opens up and tells everybody, go out there, do whatever you want, first time, somebody's little aunt gets sick and she dies from this virus because nobody was wearing a mask, who do you think they're gonna sue? Is it the taxpayers' right to have to pay a lawsuit if they sue the county? Believe me, I, I want this done as well as anybody, but I'm trying, I'm trying to think of the word that's gonna protect Otero County the best and not get us into a financial burden where, because they will sue it. This is a sue happy world, you can bet there's probably five out of these people right here that would love to jump on and sue somebody. But what I'm saying is, how can you keep saying, this is also an ocean deal also? You remember back when we got the deal with the ocean fine if we didn't do it? Now somebody's complaining on a work safety issue. So ocean is a federal bill, that's not a state bill. So it, it's very tough. I mean, we already have one resolution in saying, but I'm not gonna say that whoever elected official doesn't tell people to take your masks off and go to work, open the doors, is violating their oath. They're not. And also trying to protect the people of Otero County and protect the right of people.
How, how much, how, what is your child, what is your grandchild's future worth to you? Is it, is it, is their life, is it worth taking everything away from our children because we're afraid that we might get sued by somebody or something might happen in the future? You know, we're not telling everybody to take their masks off. We could just tell people, if you will, if you so choose to take your masks off, you can. That's, the liability goes back to the people. But how does the county going to be liable? Because we say, businesses can open, restaurants, C-Seniors can open, let's go down there and have a red chili, wouldn't that be good? Go have a red chili enchilada down at CJ and Brenda's this afternoon. Unfortunately, they've been closed for the last month and a half or, well, I don't know, maybe they're doing curbside now, but you get my drift. We, why, why not just say, businesses can open, if you so choose to open, you could be allowed to open. We're gonna, our sheriff has made a commitment to us today that he's gonna keep the state police off of you and he's gonna keep the New Mexico Health Department off of you. Boom. And then let people, if you choose to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't, you don't have to. If you wanna open your business, open your business. If you don't, then don't. But give it, give the, give life back to people. Give their, their choices back. Give their freedom back. Instead of us sitting back going, oh, we might get sued, ah, you know?
I understand that because I don't like to text the governor, but--
Well, maybe he's actually got a backbone.
We still have to abide by the state law, don't we?
Is it, if it's unconstitutional, do you? I say it's unconstitutional and I don't say it's state law. I say it's a, a mandate and law and a mandate are two different things. The governor, if we're under any law at all right now, we're under martial law. Because martial law is when you have a politician that just speaks it and it becomes law. So, and it's illegal. It's unconstitutional. We're, we're not under state law right now. We're under a communist tyrant governor's martial law is what we're under.
Okay. There's no need for any name calls. We are under a New Mexico state health order mandate. That's what we are under. So--
Mandate, mandate.
So Michael, explain to me what that means.
I've had a lot of friends ask me that and man, in this case, mandate is just another synonym for an, an instrument of administrative law. We, different agencies call things different things. The, under the state laws about emergencies and public health, the state, the governor and the health secretary are empowered to issue orders. And that's what these are formally denominated. If you look at them, they're called orders, um, um, in ordering various things to be done, businesses to be closed. So that's where the authority comes from, is these state laws, that they're acting under powers the legislature granted them.
Sheriff Black, would you like to give your opinion on this?
Come on, Sheriff.
We've, we've been going through this for months, okay? Through the Sheriff's Association, through everybody in the state. And I'll tell you right now, this is a health order, it's a mandate. It's not a law. Okay, I will not enforce it anytime because it is not a law. So I will not enforce-- We have met with numerous, ladies, please. We have met with numerous business owners throughout the county. We had several meetings with G.B. Oliver, um, at the chamber, City Chamber. We invited business owners. We invited lots of people that have businesses and we talked about just what you're talking about. People I have, the forty, who go out and say, hey, open up. Nobody was in favor of that because they're the ones that the governor is gonna come after and pull their lives. Pull their liquor lives, pull their business lives. Okay? They, they're not in favor. So we, we, we haven't messed with it anymore.
Would you be willing to make the commitment though, David, if, say, if a restaurant opened up and they have the health department show up there, the New Mexico State Police show up there to cite them, would you, would you make the commitment to respond to that and to tell them to leave?
I've done that probably fifteen times already.
Good for you. Good for you.
They go, they, they cite them, say they're in violation of health orders. I've been to, I've gone three times, I've been to local businesses here in town. Here's what I do with the education. This is what the health order says, this is what you do. You are in compliance with that health order. And there's been numerous times we've called, I've told Captain, the state police, had them, asked him, say, hey, have your guy go back out, reevaluate it. And ninety-nine percent of the time, they go back out, you are in compliance, continue with your business as well. So that, that's where we're at right now. Like I said, every complaint I get like this, I'll visit them. I can help them keep doors open, keep curbside service. The big issue we have, this did they mandate? Um, it's been challenged throughout the state on several occasions. It's gone to the Supreme Court, Supreme Court's like, nope, we, we don't get it. Like state body has given her this power, do what she is right now. And there's a bill introduced right now to where they're going to try to pull that power back and then get to a thirty day. And every thirty days, it has to be assessed by the legislative bodies to have it continue. I think it's a good bill. I think it will probably pass. And I think she will be too, it can hurt.
Well, as long as, you know, as, I know that it would give such great peace to the business owners of Otero County to know that if they do have the state police show up to harass them or try to shut them down, that they could call the sheriff's department and the sheriff's department will respond.
And I put that out numerous, numerous times--
Perfect.
Social media every day. You get somebody to show up, we even have people that are imposters showing up, talking to people and, and demanding pain right now, or they're gonna shut them down, pull their lives. Yeah. I haven't seen it here in Otero County. It's been very prevalent in the town. That's where we kinda started getting the information. We got people poking you and trying to protect people.
Well, we appreciate you, we support you, Sheriff. We promise you that.
Hi, it's me again, Walt Kaufman. We, um, what a contentious issue. And, um, you know, it's hard to know where to start. Let's, let's start back in like February last year. What do we know about the virus? You know what? I think you're losing sight of is that the Constitution and state law provides for emergencies. Why would they do that? Well, because there could be an emergency where they really needed to curtail rights. And so built into the Constitution under the Commerce Clause, the catch-all, and also in our state government under twelve ten ten, twelve ten ten of the New Mexico statutes and twelve ten A dash five through, through those, there's language about emergencies. The problem, the heartburn that I have, and I suspect you guys do too, is, hey, it was a fine for an emergency back in April. We didn't know what the hell we were faced with. We didn't know whether this was a cold or it was a biological weapon. There's still not a hundred percent proof what it is exactly. But here we have a year of time that we spent with it and we see that it's not-- But here we have a year of time that we spent with it and we see that it's not the thing that kills everybody it comes in contact with. So, most people are saying, well, gee, let's relax these rules. Unfortunately, our governor is not one of those people, okay? Unlike Texas. So, my conundrum is if you say, this is unconstitutional, we can't do this, blah, 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 well, that's not true. If you have an emergency next year and the government's required to step in and suspend constitutional rights, then they should be able to do that for a temporary period of time. It's part of the Constitution, it's part of government. Right here in Otero County, if you have an emergency, I'm a firefighter, if you have a house on fire, I'm going to go into the house. Do I have a warrant? It's part of the emergency response. So, I think it's kind of radical to say, this is unconstitutional. I don't agree with that. It is constitutional. I think the sheriff said the important thing. Government needs to be reined in after a while. What's temporary is, is fine. You want to go for thirty days with some kind of an emergency or some period of time defined by law, have at it. If you read the section, New Mexico statutes, twelve ten A dash five, the, all the governor has to do is get with her friend in the health department and have some coffee or drink a beer or whatever and decide to extend the emergency. There's no limit. She could extend that emergency for ten years. And it looks like she intends to do something like that. Sheriff Black said, hey, there's a bill under, in process to stop that. And exactly how would that happen? Well, it would require that the governor had, call a special session and get approval from the legislature to extend it. If we're going to do some kind of resolution from the county, it would seem like it would be great to support that effort because that would stop the governor from this abuse of power that we see right now. What bothers me some is if we do have an emergency, say the Chinese release a biological agent in the United States and it really does kill people, the government needs to have the mechanism to come to us and say, look, we need you to drop your, you know, your constitutional rights long enough to stay alive. We want you not to meet, we want you to do these various things. That tool of government, I hate to see that thrown away because we're likely to face that in the future sometime. So, I guess in conclusion, I would say to the commissioner, why don't you support the legislature, the legislation that's being proposed right now to limit the governor's dictatorial process?
It's Matthew Ransom again, and I just got to speak on this emergency thing because it makes absolutely no sense at all. Because then if the government could just suspend your rights on an emergency, all they have to do is just, it's an emergency, herd everybody into concentration camp. They could just do anything they want then. It makes absolutely no sense. FDR tried that in the thirties, usually because it was an economic depression, he had emergency powers, and it was shot down by the Supreme Court. That is no excuse at all. The government cannot even suspend your rights in an emergency. The fundamental problem here is your rights do not come from government. They come from God, they come from God Creator, and when you go back, you go back to your Creator. They don't have any authority to suspend your rights as a human being. You've got a right to your life, you've got a right to your liberty, and you've got a right to your property. And the government of this country is supposed to honor that. And it's totally unique to this country and only this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
All right. Any other discussion?
Mark, right. After thoughtfully listening to all this, this is really, this disease does not obey laws, it does not obey orders. The only thing we have to go by is what science tells us. That's the only way we're going to beat this thing. And if we have to mask up and suck it up until it's over, then that's what we have to do. We don't have any other choice. This isn't about passing a law or passing a mandate. This is a disease that, there's nineteen thousand other COVIDs that haven't made the jump to human beings yet that we know about.
With an over ninety-nine percent recovery rate, that's not forget that.
But it's going to kill the weakest of us or any of us.
And those are the ones that should be focused, the elderly and those with pre-existing conditions should be focused on and our children should be able to go back to school.
Yes, but we don't know when this transmits to another human being. It's not like the flu. It's not like a hundred years ago, during nineteen eighteen, they knew how to isolate people and they knew the symptoms were coming down. Now we have a disease that's passed on without the knowledge of you being sick, sometimes for weeks.
It's not as lethal or dangerous as the flu either. Contagious as the flu.
It is contagious. But again, this is like an argument over, over what is constitutional and not. I think it's really about what does the science tell us that we need to do to get rid of this stuff? Because it's not going to listen to anybody. All we can do is just do our vaccinations, do our social distancing, and, you know, wearing a mask sucks, it does. I hate it, I'd get out of my truck every time and I'd go, oh, I forgot that damn thing, I gotta walk back to the truck and put it on. So, nobody likes it. And it's just that we have to gut our way through this until it's over. And it's heading towards a point where when we get so many people vaccinated, it is going to be over. Right?
That's a whole other subject right there.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mark.
All right. I'll make a motion for a request approval of resolution number oh-three dash one-one dash two-one backslash one oh nine four seven. Resolution of poison the state constitutional health orders. Can I get a second?
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'm going to have to go with Koi on this one.
All right. All right, moving on to agenda item eighteen. Discuss and consider the press release slash public statement released by Commissioner Gerald Matherley and Commissioner Vicky Marquardt calling on Commissioner Griffin to resign his office immediately.
All right, if I will, if I could read this press release right quick.
Commissioner Griffin, one thing real quick. When we do this, keep it all county business. Don't throw any personal.
I'm just going to keep it all inside this statement right here. Otero County Commissioners Matherley and Marquardt demand Commissioner Griffin resign. Almagorda, New Mexico, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Gerald Matherley, Otero County District One Commissioner, and Vicky Marquardt, Otero County District Three Commissioner, issued the following statement calling upon Koi Griffin to resign his office as Otero County District Two Commissioner. Koi Griffin, from his first day as an Otero County Commissioner, has devoted himself to promoting his Cowboys for Trump organization rather than being a county commissioner who serves the citizens of Otero County who elected him. They have been, there have been an endless series of incidents with Commissioner Griffin that have led to investigations by the Secretary of State, the Attorney General, and the state auditor. Lawsuits have been filed against the county because of Commissioner Griffin's actions. He has been banished from the Mascolero Apache Reservation. He has made racist statements. He has repeatedly insulted other public officials. He has refused to comply with state campaign finance laws. His actions have consumed an enormous amount of time of county staff who must deal with the drama he instigates at the expense of attending to public business. Commissioner Griffin has called repeatedly for violence, stating, the only good Democrat is a dead Democrat, which led to threats on county staff. He told a reporter the governors of Virginia and Michigan were traitors and should be hanged. He was one of the rioters who stormed the United States Capitol to stop the counting of the electoral vote, an action for which he has been criminally charged in federal court. And he has called for violence at the inauguration tomorrow of President Biden. There is an effort to recall Commissioner Griffin from office. That process will take months to complete. The New Mexico Attorney General's proposed lawsuit under NMSA ten dash four dash two to remove Commissioner Griffin also will take time. The people of Otero County deserve an end to this circus now. We call upon Commissioner Griffin to resign his office immediately. If he does not, we will support the recall effort and the removal proceedings of the Attorney General. So, rather stark words and I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to respond to it and to maybe just, maybe respond and maybe give you a little bit more light on some of the statements that have been made in this press release. But I guess my first question in regards to it is, is whose idea was it to write this?
Boy, like we told you in the beginning, we're not going to discuss this because this is another court bill.
No, no, it's just, it's a, it's a public statement that was made by you and Commissioner Marquardt, and I'd just like to know whose idea was it to make the statement?
I'll just, I'll just tell you from where I'm coming from. When this, when you first ran for commissioner, I was one of your biggest supporters. And you know that. Starting last June, when you went off one hundred percent Cowboys for Trump, I felt like you left the county behind. And when I became a county commissioner and I come in this office and I got people looking to me that are afraid to come to work, I feel responsible for them. And I feel like I've been working my ass off since I've been in the commission and I know what this takes to do this, it's like a full-time job. And you're not here. And you're getting paid by the county. And I don't feel like you're earning your paycheck right now. That's where I'm coming from. What I want for you, Koi, is to get your personal life in order and find some peace. Because you're still my friend. And I want the best for you. I don't want anything bad for you. But what this is doing to the county admin building, when I come in here and I talk to people and they don't like coming to work, as a commissioner, I feel responsible for them. I feel like I have to have a voice for them. So, that's where I'm at, and that's all I'm going to say about it.
So, is that, so then was it your idea to write this?
I'm not going to comment on that because I don't want to throw anybody under the bus or anything.
Well, you don't have to.
I think it was, I think it was more of a unanimous.
But it was, but it was somebody's idea to write this. It was somebody's idea to write it. Can I ask you, who wrote it?
It was mine. As an Otero County resident, it was my opinion to have my commissioner write that letter.
So, did you write it?
I didn't write it.
No, that's not, that's not what my question was. I won't, who penned it? Who wrote it? Who authored it?
Microsoft Word.
Hey, this is a, can you call them, this is us, Gerald.
This is still us.
I know, but if you could please, but if you could please, but if you could please provide me the respect, this was written about me. If you could please provide me the respect to ask these questions of my two fellow commissioners without being, without any other input, can you please do that for me, Vicky and Gerald?
I will just say that it was a unanimous, we decided it needed to be done. We were, I got phone calls at two twenty in the frickin' morning about this stuff. I mean, it was a nightmare. And so, I think it was a unanimous decision that this needed to be done. I don't think it matters who wrote it. I think that we were in agreement.
And if it doesn't matter who wrote it.
Why does it matter to you, Koi?
But it does matter to me.
It still says the same thing.
Who penned, okay, well then I'll just, let me just, let me address some of it then. It says, Koi Griffin, as you've just said, that I've been doing so much with other stuff. It says, Koi Griffin, from his first day as an Otero County Commissioner, has devoted himself to promoting his Cowboys for Trump organization rather than being a county commissioner who serves the citizens of Otero County who elected him. If I may, it says right here, from my first day, on January eleventh, I took office January one. On January eleventh, I was the only elected official who was down at Santa Teresa whenever the governor made her statement that there was no crisis on the southern border. I was there as an Otero County Commissioner and I, and I asked her how she was going to provide security in our, on our boot heel apart from that. Later on, I advocated strongly alongside Sheriff Black on our secondary Border Patrol checkpoints, whenever they, whenever they were. Don't let me finish, please, let me finish. Whenever they were shut down, Sheriff Black and I stood strongly side by side as a commissioner and a sheriff. Featured in the New York Post, in NPR, our opinions were featured in both of those areas, as well as I was on Fox News three times as an Otero County Commissioner, not as Cowboys for Trump. I was on Tucker Carlson, I was on Neil Cavuto, I was on Maria Bartiromo, as well as NBC Nightly News with Lester Holt. All four of those platforms, I was on there as an Otero County Commissioner advocating for border security and for our Border Patrol checkpoints to be closed. Later, whenever Social Small brought an entourage of other Congress representatives, including Veronica Escobar, Juan Castro, Jerry Nadler, and herself, whenever they came to our Border Patrol station right here in Almagorda, New Mexico, to go throw our Border Patrol agents under the bus and try to blame the death of that young boy on the Border Patrol agents and their processes, I was there as an Otero County Commissioner. I asked Congressman Joaquin Castro at that press conference where they said they were only going to allow for two questions. I got the second question at that press conference and I asked Juan Castro, as I presented my question, I said, I'm Koi Griffin, I'm a county commissioner, I stand on the platform of sixty-five thousand people of Otero County, and I want to know how you're going to provide security and stop the human trafficking without a physical structure in place as a county commissioner. Then whenever I went to Washington DC on the first Cowboys for Trump ride, I'd already done an enormous amount of work before I ever even saddled a horse for Cowboys for Trump. So, to say from the first day, but when I did saddle a horse for Cowboys for Trump and I made that horseback ride into our nation's capital, it was advocating for border security. Whenever I got a phone call from the President of the United States at the airport, whenever I was fixing to fly back out, I didn't talk to the President of the United States on the phone for five minutes and I asked him if he knew where Cloudcroft, New Mexico was. He said no, and I said, Mr. President, you're going to know exactly where it's at whenever the forest catches on fire around there because it's all going to burn to the ground, we got to do something. He gave me a commitment right there on the phone, Koi, I'm going to fix your problem. He put me in direct touch with Undersecretary Jim Hubbard, whom I had numerous conversations and communication with as an Otero County Commissioner. Whenever I got invited into the Oval Office on September the twelfth, that was at a commissioner's affiliate in Washington DC where I was there, Lori B's was there too. She was somewhere, but she was there. And whenever I addressed the conditions of the national forests and the, and the Lincoln up here and the dangers that, that Cloudcroft, they held to Cloudcroft, I had a man come into the office and invite me over to the Oval Office to sit down at the desk with the President of the United States, and that was on the platform of a county commissioner. The President of the United States has, I've talked to him personally three times and communicated outside of that many other times with him and his staff, always as an Otero County Commissioner. So, to make the statement in here that from my first day as an Otero County Commissioner promoting himself and Cowboys for Trump organization rather than being a county commissioner, that sounds like something that Nicole Maxwell, the Almagorda Daily News would do to me right there.
All this stuff you just listed, as the commissioner I thought you would always be.
And that's what I was doing. How did I venture off?
Koi, you're never here. I mean, you'd come home for the meetings and you'd leave that day.
And I, but I, well, I disagree with you on that, but I just want to make, make clear that that first statement right there, I feel like is unfair because I have given everything in myself to the people of this county, particularly the people in your district where you live in Cloudcroft and our forest concerns. Let me move on. It says, there- It says, there have been an endless series of incidents with Commissioner Griffin that have led to investigations by the Secretary of State, the Attorney General, and the State Auditor, which we understand, the Secretary of State, the Attorney General, and the State Auditor are all three radical progressive Democrats. They're, all three are. The Secretary of State, her, her accusations, investigations against me right now are appealed to the 10th Circuit because she wants to unmask my donors to treat them with the same slander and the same harassment that I've been being treated with over the last two years. The Attorney General, Hector Baldairis, and I would love to get into the travel voucher, which I told Gerald that I wouldn't, but I could prove, and I, and that will be looked at later because I've been very unfairly treated, and Michael can testify, that I've been very unfairly treated in that travel voucher. But, and the State Auditor, the State Auditor, Brian Cologne, who's, who's coming after me in the way he is while, again, the governor spent $16,000 in alcohol and food last year when they're not supposed to have any group gatherings? Why doesn't Brian Cologne go and, and look at him? But anyways, these are investigations. It sounds bad, but an investigation is only an investigation until the truth comes out. It's like I mentioned earlier, I welcome any and all investigations because all an investigation will do is prove my innocence. The media doesn't want that to happen because the media wants to use that scary word investigation so they can make all the community think that you're guilty of something that you never did. Right here, it says lawsuits have been filed against the county because of Commissioner Griffin's actions, which lawsuits, that's plural. I guess, would that be, I mean, I would love to ask you, what lawsuits?
You'd have to ask Michael on that one.
Well, okay, are you talking about the two that Blair Dunn has filed?
Those, those are related to the Cowboys for Trump.
And what other lawsuits?
There are two lawsuits there.
Those two lawsuits, okay, so the two lawsuits that you're referring to are both filed by Blair Dunn, who everybody in the legal circles has a very good opinion of Blair Dunn, and usually they're rolling their eyes whenever they're giving it. But, so they're both by Blair Dunn. One of them is to represent the Chairman of the Democrat Party, Jeff Swanson, because Jeff was saying that I had blocked him off of my Facebook account. So that's the lawsuit that's been filed. The second lawsuit, again, is filed by Blair Dunn, and it's because we didn't respond to an emperor request at his, the way that he felt like we should have with the public records request in regards to the lawsuit that he had filed for Jeff Swanson. Am I wrong in that, Michael, or is that pretty much it in a nutshell?
Um, the one suit has to do with friends lists and providing information off the Cowboys for Trump Facebook page. The other one is he wanted the county to supply, I believe it was a video that had appeared on the Cowboys for Trump page.
On an emperor request, correct?
Right, he'd asked the county-
Public records, I got it the first time, I thought I did. But Blair Dunn is, they're both by Blair, and again, you don't have to dig very deep in the legal circles to get a very spot-on opinion of Blair Dunn. But now the next statement says, he has made racist statements. This is one that probably stings the hardest. What exactly is the statements that I've made that have been racist?
Well, I think when you were making the comment about people going back to Africa and that kind of stuff, and in your defense, I will say that I think they took that, part of that out of context. But I have some really good black friends that were super offended by that, and I feel like I'm having to defend you in comments that you made.
So you, you say that you understood that I, they took it out of context, but you still put it in the-
But when you play it over and over, Coy-
But you still put it in there. I don't play, I don't play it over and over. But you still, even though you just by your own admission said that people, other people have taken it out of context, you still made the statement, he has made racist statements. Those things, those things are harsh, and in regards to that statement, you know, whenever I said that, Vicki, you know the context it was said under. It was said to those black NFL football players that were kneeling at our flag and wanting to play something as racist as a black national anthem. There's nothing any more racist than a national anthem that only recognizes people by the color of their skin. What a racist thing that they want to do. So I told them that they should go back to Africa if they want to play something as racist as a black national anthem, the same way I would tell a bunch, a group of white guys if they wanted to play a white national anthem, to go back to Europe, or Ireland, or Germany, or wherever they're from. That's, that's, that wasn't a racist statement. That was an American statement because in America, we're all different colors of all different nationalities and ethnicities. And in no way, shape, or form am I racist in any way. So, and you just said that, but whenever you put it in a, in a press release to release to the media, do you know the damage that that does to me in the community? When people read this and say, he's made racist statements, they, they, they respond with very vicious attacks.
I know, I've heard a lot of them.
And it, but, but, yeah, and then it goes on to say, he has repeatedly insulted other public officials. What, what other public officials have I repeatedly insulted?
I'm, I feel like you're cross-examining me right now.
Well, I, I feel like you owe me. Y'all are the ones that released this about me. Am I not, am I not granted the, the right to be able to just ask you what you meant by it or what, what statements you're talking about? I didn't say it about you.
No.
You, y'all said it about me, so I'm just asking you. How have I repeatedly insulted other public officials?
Well, I, honestly, I can't even think of, of one right now.
Can you do, would you, you don't even want to respond?
Other than the governor.
Okay, so then it says, he has refused to comply with state campaign finance laws. What's, what state campaign finance laws?
Aren't you under investigation right now from the Secretary of State?
And it's appealed to the, to the 10th Circuit. So, you know, you're, this is condemning me for something. He has refused to comply. It doesn't say he's under an investigation. It says he has refused to comply with state campaign finance laws. So I just have to ask you, what laws are those that I didn't comply with?
Well, from what I understand, there's like a $7,800 fine hanging over your head right now.
And that's all based on, and that's all based on if the Secretary of State can force me to register as a political action committee, but, and I don't meet any of the legal criteria for that, for registering as a political action committee, and the only reason why I don't is because they want to unmask any donors that I may have so they can treat them the same way that I've been treated in a statement like this right here. Attacked, you know, because that's what they do. So it goes on, his actions have consumed an enormous amount of county staff who must deal with the drama he instigates at the expense of attending to public business. It's a pretty harsh statement to make. I don't mean to instigate any drama. I only try to stand for our rights and our freedoms and our liberties.
I know, and I understand that, but when-
And, and drama, the drama that's instigated is by people like some that are here that are just dying for me to step down because they hate me so bad.
Well-
So they instigate all of this drama.
Well, Coy, you have to realize, we have sheriff staffies that have to answer the phone down here because the calls that are coming in are so vile. I guarantee you, your mom, your sister, you wouldn't want them answering those calls.
And I asked Pamela, and I asked, I'd already talked to Pamela about if we could entertain getting maybe a, a call service to screen some of the calls coming in. So poor little old Diana doesn't have to get screened out every time she answers the phone. We could contract that out to another company that would intercept and filter those calls, where poor little Diana wouldn't be getting screamed at every deranged idiot that wants to call in and say vulgar hateful stuff.
You don't pay for it?
But going on, it says Commissioner Griffin has called repeatedly for violence, stating the only good Democrat is a dead Democrat, which led to threats on county staff. Now, whenever I said that statement at that deal in TIRAC, you've seen the video, you know, as soon as I said that, I said, now, I mean this only in the political sense, not in the physical. I could already see how people are going to be trying to use this video against me like I want to go murder the Democrats. It's not what I want to do. I meant it in no way, shape, or form violent in any sense of the word, but, you know, I thought, how could I get others to understand like what I was saying? But, you know, like Gerald, you're a, you're a Cowboys fan and Dallas Cowboys fan, and how many times have you said, man, I hope the Cowboys kill the Broncos this weekend. I hope the Cowboys murder the Broncos. I hope the Cowboys annihilate the Broncos. The only good Bronco's a dead Bronco. Would people think that that was instigating violence? Would they think, wow, Gerald wants to go kill all the Denver Broncos? How dare him? That's exactly the same context and figure of speech that I was saying. It was like a pep rally. It was like a, it was like a, it was a rally. It was to charge the people up. And I was, I was trying, I was doing the same thing as you could do kind of in sports. I said, the only good Democrat's a dead Democrat. I didn't mean it physically. I wasn't promoting violence. I wasn't wanting anybody to go out and harm Democrats. I was only talking about the upcoming election and about how we needed to annihilate them. We need to kill them. We need to crush them. We need to destroy them. It was the same verbiage. It was the same context. And it was used all the way up to the President of the United States Senate impeachment hearings. They tried using this and flipping it. Whenever I said it, immediately after I said it, I don't mean this in the physical, only politically. I'm only speaking about politics. But here, it's used against me again. So that's one instance where you said, the only good Democrat is a dead Democrat. But it says that I've called repeatedly. So what other times have I called for violence?
Well, Coy, I want to take your hammer and Commissioner Griffin's-
No, well, I would like to speak to you.
I'm only going to talk a little bit.
Okay.
But one thing you need to back off, Commissioner, interrogation like cheese or cold.
No, I'm not. Well, if I'm coming across like that, I apologize. It's not my intent. I, I apologize if I'm speaking too passively.
I'm a big girl.
I know you are. She's a big girl.
She is, but still. The, the other thing, going back to your, your donation deal, on your campaign deal-
Donation deal on the campaign deal? What are you talking about?
You're talking about on your, your State, Secretary of State-
Uh-huh.
You all went through all some of your hearings already. You agreed on an arbitrator, arbitrator rule-
Yeah.
-to this day.
Yeah.
So now, if it's in a court deal, this shouldn't even be talked about.
It's appealed. Well, I'm talking about it. Don't, you don't have to worry about me. I'll talk about it. It's my case. I'm, but, but, but it's, but it's appealed to the 10th Circuit, so it's, it's still following the legal processes. I haven't been found guilty on anything that they've accused me of.
Okay. Now, you going to let me talk?
Yes, sir.
So if I, if I take my phone up right now and I call your county cell phone, what's going to happen?
You get my answering machine?
No, there is no answering machine. We ain't had a voicemail set up.
Okay.
I just called it a second ago.
Okay.
I have so many people call me and tell me, I've tried to get rid of, out of contact with my commissioner and I get no response.
Yeah.
The voicemail has never been set up.
Okay.
So this is some of the things right here-
That's not in here.
Commissioner Griffin, let me finish. There's some of these things right here that you're, you want to know why we want you, asking you to resign because you took off here not too long ago on Easter. You were going for six, seven weeks.
I was going-
You let me finish.
Okay.
You did not warn us, except for when you called in the day we had a commission meeting of any county business. So, right there, the county paid you for seven weeks for you to run around on your Cowboys for Trump platform.
Okay.
So that's on them. When they won't con, you won't contact them, and I have, or both of us have to take care of your district.
Uh-huh.
What are you doing? That, that's what I'm making, if you were staying here, when you first started, you were starting out great, and then you drifted off. It's not fair to the county taxpayers to pay your salary when you're not doing anything for us.
And, and, and I'm glad that you brought that up because it was a, it was, I was only planning on being gone for two weeks, but you and Commissioner Bees, as soon as I left the county, passed a, a resolution, a quarantine deal, that forced me into quarantine whenever I came back into the county, so I couldn't even come around, Gerald. Remember that?
Yep, that was also a state mandate deal too.
No, it was a county ordinance whenever y'all passed it. So if you wanted me to clarify why I wasn't here for four weeks or five weeks, you and Lori had a big part to do with that. I couldn't even attend a meeting because y'all put a quarantine restriction on me after I left the county, not before, after I left it.
I didn't realize you were going.
So, so here it says that I've repeatedly called for, because I would like to know. I mean, if I've called, if I've done these, if I've made racist statements, I want to know about them. If I've called for violence, I want to know, so I ask you this sincerely. It says that I've repeatedly called for violence. Now, the only good Democrat is a dead Democrat. I don't feel like I called for violence in that. But what else did I do that called for violence?
That's the one that comes to mind for me.
But do you see how whenever you put something in a statement, repeatedly called for violence, he's repeatedly, that sounds like others that I know that know how to play words. Repeatedly called for violence.
Yeah.
You know? It's slanderous. It's hurtful. It may, it really, really hurts me.
I'm sure it does.
Because it makes people around here think that I'm repeatedly calling for violence, whenever this statement that you put in here is only based off of the only good Democrat is a dead Democrat, which I already explained that at the time and I did. So again, now, I hope you understand now that I wasn't at all meaning anything violent.
I would just hope that when you get in front of a microphone or a camera-
Yeah.
-that you think about what you're saying.
Well, and I would-
Because sometimes I think you get a little wrapped up in the moment-
And I would hope that-
-and then you have to backtrack and explain what you meant. So I would ask that you try to be careful going forward.
And I would hope that whenever you release a press release the next time, you can understand how damaging and hurtful it is to whoever you're speaking about in here too. But let me go on. It says, he told a reporter the governors of Virginia and Michigan were traitors and should be hanged. You know, everything else in this statement could just be misinterpreted, but that right there is a bold-faced lie. I never said that. I said that if the governors of Virginia and Michigan were guilty of treason, then they should be hanged. And that's not what I say. That's what the Constitution of the United States says. And I feel like there could be a possibility that they may, but, you know, you mentioned the governors of Virginia and Michigan, two of the most radical, extreme communists, I could, think I could fairly say, in America. And particularly the Governor of Virginia, you know that the Governor of Virginia made the statement that in regards to partial birth abortion, that if the baby wasn't completely killed as it's coming out of the womb, and somehow it survived and it was laying on the bed still alive, what would happen to that life? And the Governor of Virginia, in his words, said, at that time, the decision will be made between the doctor's mother and, and, or the doctor and the baby's mother, where if they decided to continue to kill it, now they're killing babies outside of the womb. Now you have a child that is outside of the womb with the, maybe a near-lethal wound in it from them not being able to get it killed all the way, and if they say no, give it the thumbs down, now the baby is dunked in a solution and killed. That, that's what the Governor of Virginia said in his statement. And y'all are, in this statement right here, it's like you're defending them, you know? But-
Well, you're not defending them. Did you not say he should be hung?
If he's guilty of treason, there's a difference between me saying you should be hung, or if you're guilty of treason, you should be hung. And if you're guilty of treason and if you should be hanged, that's not what I says. That's what the Constitution of the United- That's what the Constitution of the United States says.
Okay. You're talking about your let your little letter right here. Get down. We want the circus at.
What is that? I'm sorry.
We want the circus to end now.
Yeah.
Okay, what do we have right now? You brought in all these TV cameras.
No, I'm not.
So you listen to me.
I'm not there yet. Am I not going to be able to go through? No, why don't you listen to me? This is my agenda item.
Okay, I am talking.
Okay, and I'm talking too, and I'm not to that part of the letter yet. When I get there, then you can say you can say what you want to say. But until we get there, I'd like the respect to be able to once again point something else out in here. Your letter right your letter right here Gerald says, he was one of the rioters who stormed the United States Capitol to stop the counting of the electoral vote, an action for which he has been. Do you have that on? Do you have that on here? He was one of the rioters who stormed the United States Capitol to stop the counting of the electoral vote, an action for which he has been criminally charged in court.
That's him.
Yeah. And so I don't know if you want to look at this or not, but these are these are for you and I'll give this to you too Gerald. But this is from the pretrial hearing in Washington DC. This is whatever they were going to release me out. This is the transcript. And in the transcript, because I want to meet me make very clear to people where my position was and what my role was in the Capitol riot that I was supposedly to be a part of. Now, this is the judge right here saying this. This is Chief Justice Beth Al. She says, I am concerned about somebody in pretrial detention for longer than the maximum term of imprisonment if convicted. That's the point I am trying to make. And that's the part of the reason that the prosecutors, particularly given the backlog and the delay in having trials due to health and safety concerns, have not asked for pretrial detention in misdemeanor cases. And you know, I also look at this case and I see that this is not one of the individuals who banged down doors, sprayed with pepper spray or bear spray law enforcement officials, injured law enforcement officials, poked out the eyes of police in the building. He was with all those people. And this is where the guy the judge is a little bit misconstrued right here. She says, but let me explain. It says, he was with all those people, which I was. She says, I guess he really likes those people, but the people that she's talking about are not necessarily the people that I was with. The people that knocked down the doors and pepper sprayed and assaulted police officers, those aren't the people that I was with. Those were the people up inside the Capitol. That was a different group of people that was there on January 6th. I was there, I know. The the group of people that I were with were not the ones that were knocking down the doors and spraying people. The people that I were with were just mostly all patriots that were are concerned about the elections and the direction of our country. Let me go on. And again, this is a context. This is the transcript. He says, he marched with those people. He was cheering them on with the bullhorn. I wasn't cheering those people on with the bullhorn. Anybody that watched the video of January 6th saw what happened. I merely borrowed a bullhorn for just long enough to pray with the people that were coming up to the Capitol. If I would have been cheering on those people with the bullhorn, I would have been turned facing the Capitol, facing the people that were doing the violence. I wasn't doing that. I was turned away from those people and I was trying to pray peace with the people that were approaching the building. That was my part right there. But she goes on to say, but he wasn't actually one of the people who did the banging on the doors, the poking out of the eyes of police officers, the spraying pepper spraying of officers. He wasn't one of the people who entered the building. Make note, this is the judge. He wasn't one of the people who entered the building, which is part of the reason he's charged with a misdemeanor. So I have been a little puzzled about the request for detention, pretrial detention in this case, and while understanding the troubling nature of the comments this defendant made. Then the judge responds to the prosecutor. Is there anything else you want to add? Prosecutor, no, your honor, there is nothing else from the government. Period.
Excuse me, Commissioner Griffin, this is personal business here.
No, it's not. Because 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 right here in this.
In court.
Because right, no, this is personal here because right here in this, the this statement, this press release, mind you, says that, I lost it, that that he was one of the rioters who stormed the United States Capitol to stop the counting of the federal vote, an action for which he has been criminally charged in federal court. That's the statement that y'all made about me. I just wanted to clarify.
Let me ask you.
That that's not what the judge said.
Commissioner Griffin, let me ask you one question.
Okay.
Did you cross that barrier that was restricted area?
I crossed it. I crossed.
Yes or no?
Are you going to let me answer your question?
Yes or no?
I crossed over into an unauthorized zone in which I did not know that it was an unauthorized zone. Can you understand that? So let me go on. So now that maybe I hope that we're clear, I hope Nicole Maxwell from the Almagordo Daily Drive By, I hope that she's clear as well that I didn't storm the Capitol because I'm sick and tired of being accused of being one of the rioters that stormed the Capitol building. Let me go on. And he has called for violence at the inauguration tomorrow of President Biden. What exactly, how did I call for violence at the inauguration of President Biden?
Did you not say that with your significance, you're taking your guns up there? I will uphold my Second Amendment.
Yep.
It's going to get western and there'd be blood running out the door.
No, no.
No.
That wasn't before.
You said that the day after the the deal in the motel.
Day after January 6th. But you would equate that, you would equate that statement to calling for violence tomorrow at the inauguration of Joe Biden? I'll tell you something Gerald. The reason why I was so vocal about embracing my Second Amendment, I've already told you all this in public meetings before. The reason why I was so vocal in my Second Amendment is because I have had death threats like you can't even imagine. You you talk about being harassed. You have no, I could tell you stuff right now that would turn your stomach and make you sick of stuff that has been told to me. And I have shared some of this with our county sheriff, David Black. And I have also shared it with the FBI. And I have got nothing to provide me any sense that I have any security at all. That is why I said that I was going to be embracing my Second Amendment. If I was going to go lead an armed insurrection, do you think I would have told everybody what kind of firearms I had and where they were going to be in my car as I'm driving up there? I was entirely public so those would know that I was going to defend myself and my own person and my own family. That's why I said that I was going to have those firearms with me, not to so if that's if that's why you said that I was going to call for violence at the inauguration tomorrow. But that's a strong statement to make. I'm just, I just wish that I just wish you could understand.
Whose blood is going to be running out?
Whenever I said that, whenever I made, yeah, absolutely. Whenever I made that comment, if you remember back, that was on January 7th, the day after the Capitol riot. What was the only blood that ran out of the Capitol on January 6th? Was that of a 35 year old unarmed woman named Ashley Babbitt, who was shot and killed in cold blood, executed. And whenever I said, whenever I said that we could have a Second Amendment rally, I've been to lots of Second Amendment rallies and none of them have ever been violent. But if we were to have one on those steps, I believe that it would turn violent, but it wouldn't be because of the people that were embracing their Second Amendment. It would be because of the government would be shooting people the same manner and the same way that they shot Ashley Babbitt. That's the blood that I was talking about running out of the Capitol. If I never said, we're going to go kill somebody, we're going to go hang them, we're going to go get them, we're going to go murder them. I said, simply said, we would have a Second Amendment rally. And if we did, there would be blood running out of the Capitol, but it wouldn't be their blood. It would be our blood because that's the extent the government is willing to go. Look what they did to Ashley Babbitt. She was unarmed. They used no means to try to remove her with nonlethal force. There was officers all around her and she stepped up to a window and they shot her in the throat in cold blood.
Commissioner Griffin, did you not say you you were going back to Washington on the inauguration day?
I did.
And that's when you said you're going with your Second Amendment?
That's right.
When the blood would be coming out?
No, that's not what I said. The blood was going to be coming out. I said that before.
That's fine. Leave that.
But yes, I did go back. And the reason why I went back on January 20th is because I started this and I was going to finish it. I s I started standing, I when I stood by the President of the United States, I was going to stand by him until the very end, until I actually saw with my own eyes the inauguration of Joe Biden, because that's that's the call that I was called to and that's a stand that I took. And that's what took me back to Washington DC. It wasn't to go try to call for violence or go try to lead an armed insurrection. They call it an armed insurrection and they didn't confiscate one firearm from one person on January 6th at the Capitol. Not one firearm that they confiscate, but they call it an armed insurrection, like we're all a bunch of crazed armed individuals. But let me get back to the to the to the this statement then. I I I I missed one though, and I and I and I apologize because this is one that I really wanted to hit on. It said, he has been banished from the Mescalero Apache Reservation. True statement. I have been banished from up there. And but the reason why I was banished is not the reason why you think I was banished. The reason why I the reason why you think I know what the media said is because they said that I made fun of a honoring ceremony in which I laughed during when they were doing it. That's the Gabe Aguilar, the president, the chief, that's what he said, the reason why they banished me. But even in regards to that, when they were doing the 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 blessing, one of the tribal council members made a joke. He said, ah, maybe this will keep all the dead Democrats off of you. Ha, ha, ha. And so I responded and I laughed too, you know? Should I have, shouldn't I have, whatever, you know? Should I, maybe I should have told him, why don't you guys take your ceremonies more seriously? How dare you make a joke? You know, what was I supposed to do? Yeah, I responded, I chuckled, you know? But the real reason why I was banished is because Chris Valdez, a tribal member from up there who's worked for the tribe for over 30 years, was changing the oil on one of his dump trucks. The wind caught the hood of it and his toe was underneath the hedge between the bumper and the hedge and it smashed his toe off. So he started getting an infection. He went down to the tribal council. He asked them if they would please help him and they told the chief doesn't like him because he's a conservative. And he said, no, I think a horse stepped on your foot. So Chris Valdez had no place for representation. So he called me. I'm they they vote, the Mescalero Apaches vote in our election. Chris called me as his county commissioner to try to go up there and brainstorm some ideas to help him before he gets blood poisoning in his foot. So I met with Chris. We started talking about this and then Chris informed me that the tribe had been getting hundreds of thousands of dollars in COVID relief money. And the tribal president, Gabe Aguilar, was driving around in a brand new Ford Expedition. All the tribal council members were driving around in brand new vehicles while all the tribal members were living in complete destitution out in the hills, a lot of them homeless. And so I said, we need to have an audit of that COVID relief money that's coming into the tribe to make sure that money is being spent on tribal members. That's why I got banished. That's why Gabe Aguilar doesn't want me back up on that reservation. That's the reason. It wasn't because I responded to a joke that one of the tribal members made during that blessing ceremony. It was because I was up there asking too many questions, wanting to know where the tribe was spending the COVID relief money because they were all the tribal presidents driving around a $90,000 expedition while tribal council members are living or tribal members are living in complete destitution. So that's why I got banished from the from the Mescalero Apache Reservation. So going on, he has called for violence, which I didn't do. Then the last paragraph says, there is an effort to recall Commissioner Griffin from office. That process will take months to complete. New Mexico Attorney General's proposed lawsuit under NMSA 1042 to remove Commissioner Griffin also will take time. Those take too much time. The people of Otero County deserve an end to this circus now. We call upon Commissioner Griffin to resign his office immediately. If he does not, we will support the recall effort and the removal proceedings of the Attorney General. So whenever I read that, I thought, so this is all just a threat. This is all just, this statement was written with one intent and that was to make my life a living hell where I would just give up and resign because a recall effort takes too much time. You know, and everything else is too time consuming. It takes too much effort. Let's just put together this slanderous statement that's full of lies where Coy can't even go to the store without getting harassed because that's my life right now. Thank you very much. I can't even go to the store without people glaring at me and talking under their breath. I took my son down to the park the other day in Tulare Rosa and I sat there and listened to this man staring at me with the kind of hatred that I didn't know if he was going to get up off of his seat and come and assault me or not. That's what this sort of stuff does. And this was one of the most vicious, hateful, slanderous statements that has probably ever even been written. It that Dan Casey, the liberal reporter from the Roanoke Times, he said in his statement that in his 37 years of journalism, this is the harshest broadside he's ever seen by Paul by elected officials against their colleagues. 37 years, this is the harshest broadside he's ever seen. And the problem with this broadside is it's all lies. It's all slander. I just pointed it all out to you. If there's anything you giggle, if there's anything that I've said that is truthful, let me know. If there's anything that I didn't clear up in this, I hope that I hit on everything. I would have loved to hit on the travel vouchers and I don't know why you pulled that one off because believe me, it's going to come back up and we all know. And one question that I have for Pamela on Dan Casey and the Roanoke Times, whenever he reached out to you for comment on me from the county.
Yes, sir.
Um, how did he know about this statement? Was it something that you offered to him? Did you tell him, well, we've got this statement, I can send it to you?
He asked if a statement had been made on behalf of Otero County.
Okay.
I stated the board of county commissioners had.
Perfect. I appreciate that Pamela. I didn't know. I didn't, I never know, you know? I mean, it's sad. I love you guys. You know that. I love y'all. Maybe not you know, but I love y'all, you know? And I don't want, I don't want to cause, I don't want to bring, I don't want to bring drama and stuff in, but what do I do? Do I quit like everybody wants me to quit? Sorry, I'm not quitting. I'm not resigning, not going to give them what they want. I hold an oath to the people of Otero County. I took that oath seriously. I swore that oath on a Bible in front of my pastor at the time. That's how seriously I take my oath. And this right here was totally unjust. It was it was a smear campaign and it was also illegal because you can't have a shared opinion of two commissioners outside of a regularly scheduled public meeting, can you, Michael? You're a direct violation of the Open Meetings Act. You can't, how how did you do this? I mean, I know that you don't want to tell me who wrote it or whose idea it was or how it was written, but somebody had to. But somebody had to have written it, either you, Gerald, or Michael. And then it's got both of your names on it, on a county letterhead. That means that you had to have approved it. So if Michael wrote it and then sent it to you, and then sent it to you, I'm sorry that they may, maybe Michael didn't explain to you the Open Meetings Act. But unless, you have to have a publicly scheduled meeting to have a shared opinion between two commissioners. There's no other way. If you don't, it's a violation of the, as soon as I read this statement, I knew it. As soon as I read it, I thought, "How did they do this without having a publicly scheduled meeting? You didn't have a publicly scheduled meeting, did you?" No? So you didn't have a publicly scheduled meeting? So how can you have a shared opinion between two commissioners without a publicly scheduled meeting? I mean, it's, it's illegal. It's illegal. You couldn't do it. And then it's, and then it's an illegal document that's full of slander and lies that have made my life a living hell. And then reporters get ahold of this statement, and they run it in all their newspapers. They put it on all their media. And then people, people read in here and say, "Coy Griffin's a racist." "Coy Griffin's calls for violence." You know? "Coy Griffin's banished from the Mescalero..." Coy Griffin must be a horrible person. And then, and then I go out into the community and I'm hated. I go to try to entertain the thought of getting a job. You think anybody would hire somebody that's a racist, violent? I might be able to get one pushing a wheelbarrow, but I'd never be able to get one in sales or service or anything. You know? That's the damage that this sort of stuff does to somebody. And, I mean, I left here one day, and I had a man cause an accident with me in my pickup going down White Sands Boulevard. He got up into the median beside me, and he started flipping me off, and cursing at me, and swearing at me. And then he jerked his car in front of me, and I hit him from behind, barely hit him. Tried to avoid him, but I couldn't keep from it. And I get out, and he wants to fight with me in the middle of the road. And then he starts blaming me for causing the accident because I rear-ended him. And he calls the police down there to, to, to get me into trouble. And thank God for Dalton Sewell and the Albigorda Police Department, who, who looked up, who had sense enough to look up on the security cameras on the street to see that, what that man did to me. To see him harassing me and flipping me off and cursing at me, and then causing the accident. Was it because I had Commissioner Griffin on the door in my truck, and he had read some kind of trash like this in the media? Who knows? But that's the, that's the hatred. You know, and at one time, I pastored a church here, I ran a business. I was, I felt like I was loved by the community. Everywhere I went, I was loved. And then along comes politics, and along comes lies and slander. And my life has been completely flipped upside down. And Gerald, you don't, you might look up at the ceiling, but you don't understand what I go through. You don't understand. You know? You don't understand what it's like to go to the store and have people glare at you and curse you. Guys that you've always gotten along with turn their back on you and walk away from you. That's what this has caused. But I'll tell you, and I appreciate you letting me go on as long as I have. I'm very thankful to be able to get it off of my chest and address all these lies and slander that somebody wrote. We will find out who wrote it, though. I want you to know that I forgive each one of you. I love you, forgive you, hold nothing against you personally. But in regards to this statement right here, I will make, I will do everything inside of my own power and the power inside the power of the law to make sure it never happens to another county official again. Then we will set a precedent through this one right here. Because it was wrong. That's all I got to say.
All right, we're going to go to the commission.
Excuse me, sir. I did sign up for this issue as well. Thank you. Oh, I'm going to be done in six.
This is Paul Sanchez again, and this time I am speaking on behalf of the Committee to Recall Coy Griffin. And I simply want to inform the commission and the citizens of Otero County that this morning, the Committee to Recall Coy Griffin filed the recall lawsuit. And just prior to this meeting, Coy was served that lawsuit. It's sitting right there on his desk. So I'm simply informing you that he has been served with the lawsuit. And it's not, it's going to take some months. He's got about a 14-day period before the hearing will take place. And then we got to do the signature, so there's going to be months involved in it. But I simply wanted to inform you that the case has been filed, and he has been served.
Does there have to be a legal reason to recall somebody, Paul?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, sure. Does there have to be a legal reason?
There are three items in the New Mexico Constitution and the Recall Act. Conduct of misfeasance, malfeasance, or violation of the oath of office. At that hearing, if the judge believes any of the things we're concerned with and we allege is any one of those three, then yes, the recall petition will go forward. And if the District 2 citizens don't sign it, then we're done. If it does come to the election and you win that election, then we're done. We're simply providing the citizens of District 2 the opportunity to rethink what they did when they elected you.
Perfect, perfect.
Another, excuse me, Walt Kaufman, weed, another contentious issue. Okay, I've got a couple of questions and some concerns. First concern I have is recalling an elected official. Impeachment, recall, whatever, is a, is a big deal. We have voters that voted, okay? So when two commissioners decide that the third one needs to go, you're basically saying that those voters' opinions are in error. The voters had a chance to get to know the candidate before they voted for him. They had to have some trust in him. And that's the whole reason we have elections. If, if we allowed public officials to suddenly gang up on somebody and remove them from office, that would, why would we have elections? So that's a first thought, just, and it's a serious matter. So as I read into this, I'd like you to consider how serious it is, what we're talking about. This is not a minor thing. It's serious. So I also have a concern about the Sunshine Act. I've been on some public committees where we were required to follow those laws. And that's a serious issue. I'm surprised your attorney would allow the county to go forward with, in violation of that law. And I don't know how you would undo that. But for example, if I were to go file a complaint, I don't know how you would address that. It's a clear violation of the law. And not a minor violation, this is a major violation of law. Think about this. Mr., excuse me, Commissioner Griffin has been accused of a whole bunch of stuff. And now here we have the two accusers that have clearly violated the law. It sounds like the whole group is bad. It's a sad thing. Anyway, I, I noticed that that, that looked to me to be a violation, and I know the commissioner brought it up. And I don't hear the lawyer speaking up about it, so you all might need to talk about that. When I was in business a long time ago, this is what's called a shotgun. That's where you have an employee you don't like, and so you shotgun them. You pick everything you don't like about the guy, and you put it in a deal, and you shoot it down to the employee relations guy, and say, "We need to get rid of this guy. Look at all this stuff that he's done wrong." I counted 16 accusations. And of course, he's gone through a lot of them, and I won't, I'm not going to bore you with it. But I just couldn't, I, I had fun with some of them. For example, he repeatedly insulted other public officials. Now, maybe in the USSR this is illegal, but here in the United States, this is like every day. I, here a few minutes ago, I called our governor all kinds of things. Should I go to jail for that? Should I be banned from coming to your meetings? And it goes through this list of, let me just give one more and I'll shut up. Lawsuits have been filed against the county because of Commissioner Griffin. Okay. My first thought was, has, have lawsuits been filed against Otero County before? How many? Have any of these previous suits been because of Board of County Commissioner actions, or actions of a commissioner? What are the Board of County Commission's maximum number of lawsuits allowed? You know, and do you have documentation? If you're going to complain about a guy's performance, you should have some actual facts. And you should say, "He's had more lawsuits," I'm just going to stick with this, "than any other commissioner, ever. And the county can't afford to defend him." I happen to know that's not true. We've had other county commissioners that have been sued. So he's not the first one. And now we find out it's two lawsuits. I think your attorney will tell you that lawsuits is, is part of doing business nowadays. You cannot run this county without having lawsuits, it's just part of it. You've got 16 of these. I'm just appalled that you would write something like this in a shotgun manner, without a specific complaint, without facts, and try to assassinate a fellow commissioner. It's appalling to me. It's the kind of thing that opponents of this democracy would do. So I'll turn loose of it because we've had a long meeting. Thank you.
And I really just, and you don't have to answer it, but I'd really, but it's going to come out. I'd really like to know, who wrote it? Who authored the statement?
It's got both our signatures on it, I can't afford to...
So you guys sat down together and wrote it together?
No, I didn't say that. We have, I'm not saying that, leave it right there.
It's Matt Ransom again. I, I just want to say that, um, see, this is the thing, this is, I just want to say, like June 6th and, and like violence and stuff like, this is why violence is not effective political, political tactic. Because look at all the time we're wasting here. Where we could be talking about election security. And going into the Capitol, you almost got Trump impeached. See, we were about to have a real rigorous debate about election security in the, in the Capitol. But when the violence happened, that's when the debate got short. Now you just gave a whole bunch of ammunition to these people, talking all this, and look at all this time this is wasting. If we would just stay cool, kept the line, voiced your opinion, we would have had more rigorous debate on election fraud. The whole impeachment thing would have happened. We could be really pushing the election. I'm not saying that Biden would have still become president, he probably would have. But more, more of, more of the evidence would have been put up, put out into the public square. And look at all this time. We could be doing some real serious issues right here. That's why I'm saying, I meant to like, no, it's not, just stick to the legal law.
Well, this is a serious issue to me.
No, it is a ser, it is a serious issue, but...
Whenever this takes place, it's serious, it needs to be addressed.
I know what I'm saying, but I'm not, I'm not, because I, I've read the complaint. There's nothing in there that you committed any kind of acts of violence, or property damage, or anything like that. All right? But I'm talking about other people. And another thing, we don't do guilt by association in this country. It's specific to each individual based on evidence. All right? So we don't go around, "Oh, because you would..." No, no, that, that's guilt by association, we don't do that. All right, so I'm talking about the people, like, I'm not making any excuses for the people that went into the riot and started breaking down, and then a lot of them people were just let in. A lot of them were just let in. But the people, and to me, if it's nonviolent, that means it's an act of civil disobedience. Don't remember, Martin Luther King went to jail. He was nonviolent. So, so, so what are we doing here? Like, like, if you committed a violent act, yeah, I would say, yeah, he needs to be prosecuted, he needs to be held to justice, all that type of stuff. But now it's just trespassing. Civil disobedience. So what do we, what do you want me to tell you? This is, this is what, when you, when you're in the business that we're in right now, that kind of comes with the territory. Just don't get violent. Thank you, that's all I got to say.
Any further discussion?
This is just philosophically, sometimes a little absurd. But Commissioner Griffin, the perception is, with an awful lot of people in this county, that you're more devoted for Cowboys for Trump than you are as commissioner.
That's your opinion?
Yes, it is. But it's one that I hear from both Democrats and Republicans and independents. And they feel that way. And just little things like not having your answering service voicemail set up leads to an awful lot of frustration that I have heard from a former commissioner, as well as...
I'll tell you, and honestly, and it may not be an excuse. But whenever you listen to the messages, to the types of messages that get left to me over and over and over and over and over, it's difficult to sit there and listen to the type of messages that I have to listen to. So forgive me if I don't have my voicemail set up. I have my email set up, I look at my email. But my email, I can, I can just see the first one or two words, and I don't have to read it. I don't have to listen to it. I can tell what it is, and it's like looking at vomit, where you just barely glance over it, and you don't have to look. But the, but the, but the voicemails, you know, those are, those are harder to filter. So forgive me if I don't have my voicemail set up.
Well, the point is, is that your other two commissioners, your colleagues, are taking the heat. And you're away doing your thing. Which is, it's okay if you weren't a commissioner, they probably, people wouldn't care.
Yeah.
But since you occupy that seat, you know, you're one of three instead of one of five, and I just want to get that in again.
And you got to take into consideration a lot of my trips. You know, what other commissioner has been to Washington DC and got to meet with the President of the United States? I've met with not only him, the Department of Ag, the Undersecretary of the Department of Ag, senators, congressional members. I've, I've, because I know that I can't get anything done on the local level with our local Forest Service bureaucrats and all the other local low-level bureaucrats. So that's why I go the extra mile and I go to Washington DC. And I lobby at the top, because I think, well, maybe if I hit it high enough, I could actually get some things to happen. Which I felt like I did until President Trump, this last election, went the other way. I had all, I had everything right on his second term. And here we sit. But that's why I traveled. That's why I went, you know, and, and, you know, I mean...
But your perception is, is that you're not here. And that's, that's what people say a lot, is, "Oh, he's off on another Cowboys for Trump junket, doing something else."
Sure.
Rather than here.
Everything had purpose though, Mark, I promise you. Everything, everything was work, it was work, work, work. And I tell you, for people to sit back and say, "Oh, he just profited off of Cowboys for Trump", I profited absolutely nothing. I never had any kind of a, I tried to start a merchandise line at one time, thinking maybe we could buy some fuel, and that just went south. I never had anything, any money drivers. I had a donation button on my website that would usually bring in just about enough money to put gas in my truck. You know? I mean, I didn't do it for the money. I didn't, I didn't come out of it financially, I didn't, personal gain? Is, is this, is this personal gain? Having slanderous lies told about you by the county? No. That was the gain that I got, you know, so...
I think you had a damn... I think you had a damn good restaurant going.
Well, thank you.
And I used to go there all the time.
Can you imagine? Yeah, I know you did.
And let's put it this way, if Billy the Kid was around right now, and he opened a restaurant, he'd get a million people going there and selling all his food. So, you might wanna think about that.
Maybe, I still got a little spot out there, yeah. Appreciate you, Mark. Thank you, Mark, appreciate you.
That's all I have to say.
All right, no further other discussion. We'll move on to the Commissioner's Discussion and Correspondence. I, I would like to try to keep this correspondence down to a couple of minutes. We don't drag this out for another two hours. If we could, please. I've been attending the Wolf issues. That thing like it's an ongoing battle that's not gonna be in our favor. Uh, had some meetings with MTC, Representative Madrid, the Chamber of Congress, the other day. Very, it was a virtual meeting, very entertaining. The MTC people got on and said what their plans were. The BLM grazing issues, and BLM impact statements that they got coming. They're still in the drafting mode on it. Uh, spoke with Senator Griggs this morning, 321, or House Bill 321, which is the, uh, which pertained to us on the courthouse issue. Probably still gonna stay in finance and never come out of it. So, things are not looking good there, but he says there's always hope somewhere. But that's all I got to say. Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, uh, if, if, if I could get you all to believe in the Lord Jesus Christ, and have faith in Him to stand and remove cover, let us go to the Lord in prayer, and just ask for His grace. Our Most Gracious Heavenly Father, Father, we thank You, God, for this day, Lord, as we thank You, God, for every day. Father, we thank You, God, for the ability to come together as a local government, Lord, and look at this agenda, and assess the different issues and possible problems, Lord. We just ask, God, that You continue, Father, to move us forward in a positive direction for the people of Otero County. Uh, we pray for our nation, Lord God. We pray for, uh, we pray for the administration in place, Joe Biden, and Kamala Harris. And we pray, God, for all the senators and congressional members, Lord, that You may use them, Father, in a way, God, to bring about a better day for our nation. Uh, we pray for our state. We pray, Lord God, for Governor Michelle Gresham and her administration. We pray, God, for all our state legislators. Uh, we just pray, God, that You give them wisdom and conviction, Lord, where they need it, to bring our state into a better place. And we pray for a county, Lord God, that You may just give us wisdom and guidance, Father, to focus on You, focus the things in Your kingdom, Lord. And always strive, God, for a, for a better future for our children, Lord God, and for the inheritance, Father, which You promised us in Your kingdom, for those that believe and trust in the resurrection of the Lord Jesus Christ. As we thank You, Father, for all that You are, in Jesus' name, Father.
Amen.
Thank you.
I've got two pages of stuff, but I'm not gonna talk about all of it, 'cause this is running so long. But I did attend a chamber meeting this week, and I gave them a county update. I attended a meeting with the former Acting Customs and Border Protection Commissioner, Mark Mor- Morgan. He gave us a border security briefing. It's pretty scary what's going on at our border right now. It's gonna cost more to fini, to not finish the wall than to finish it. COVID is very active in the illegal border crossers that will be bused into our American communities. And I attended an, an arms meeting with the fellows that were here at our last meeting for that Alliance for Regional Military Support, which was very, very interesting. The bills that, that we really need to hammer on is that HB4. It's already passed the House Judiciary Committee, and it's going on this afternoon, I think, for a vote. And that's gonna be detrimental to us. The HB40 is the, um, private prison, where they're gonna not want us to do private prisons anymore, which is also gonna be detrimental to us. SB229 is, is just horrible for law enforcement. Um, we did manage to, we're hoping, uh, vote down the SB376, which was another horrible bill for law enforcement. And I'm thinking we might have gotten that one stopped. And I think that's about all I've got.
County Manager, report?
Sir, I don't have anything to do.
And he's turning. All right, in that conclusion, there's no executive decision. Can I make a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.